Next month.
Um.
Put on time for each of the. I think we're gonna get started. I would like to call this meeting to order. Say again?
You need a gavel.
I do, I do. Where's my rubber stamp? Thank you all for coming. Uh, this is the Regional School Committee, we are meeting here. And Mr. Bliss.
Do we have any theme music?
Uh, we begin every meeting with our community comments, we welcome anybody with anything that's on their mind, if there's anybody out there. Um, also if you have something on your, on the agenda that is near and dear to your heart later on, I would be happy to take your comments there as well. Hearing none, we shall move along. Uh, to the central office, the superintendent, Mr. Bliss, I turn the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you. And thank you so much to all of our regional school committee members.
No students?
No student at this meeting, but, uh, Mr. Smith, we may have a student rep.
Yeah.
And Mr. Kellert, are we doing a student rep in the middle school as well, or are we just going to have a rep in the high school?
We had me.
Okay.
They're having dinner.
Stay up.
They're having dinner. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Robinson, um, and I want to thank members of the regional school committee for your ongoing support and commitment throughout the entire, what was an abbreviated, um, summer. And certainly to our regional school committee members, uh, who were able to attend the opening with us last Monday. Hard to believe, uh, we've already been in session for several days. So I want to thank everyone, and especially the hard work of our new administrators, all of our new faculty members, Karen Medus in the central office, Chris Tagg in the central office, the physical plant staff, the IT staff, who did just an incredible job over the summer preparing for a hugely successful opening. And for those folks who had heard or were with us last Monday, we had systemized fifty-four staff changes throughout the school system in terms of moves, additions, changes, and, uh, we walked through all of those at the opening last Monday. And just a, a great team has been assembled, and as we moved through the buildings over the past few days, very nicely, a lot of very positive feedback in terms of the new administrators, they're in position, all the new faculty members. So I want to thank everyone who played such a strategic role in having a successful opening. Uh, we recognized a number of unsung heroes when we opened, which was a new tradition that we began, uh, last Monday, and they're featured in the superintendent's updates as part of the newly formatted central office report, which has the superintendent section, the business section, and a section for the assistant superintendent. So, uh, just for the purpose of announcing those, uh, winners, Stephen Maliuski from, uh, Plant Facilities Department, Pam Ritchie from Pine Hill, Mary Catherine Andrews from high school, Karen Raymond from the middle school, Cheryl Ingersoll from the Administrative Assistant Network, Leanne Wilkie as payroll at central office, Mary Bronski with the IT department, Susan Conley with athletics, uh, Marcy Bajowski from Chickering, Heidi Luondo from the region, and Susan Vars from food service, all were nominated over the summer for an unsung hero award, people that just consistently go above and beyond the call of duty in doing their job and never looking for recognition or applause, but who do an incredible job. So that's something we started administratively this year and, um, was very well received. We had a meeting, um, last week with the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee, and, uh, there is a task and on my plate to take a look at my goals again and to do a little bit of a crosswalk between the superintendent's goals and the standards that are preferred in the superintendent's, um, system, uh, the evaluation system at the state level, so I'll be working on that this week. In addition, we would like to, uh, recognize, scanning through, um, we'll be calling upon Dana White and, um, and Michael Lee to hopefully be able to have a discussion, a meeting around capital planning for fiscal fifteen. Um, there was a desire, at least among some folks, to begin discourse around capital planning earlier, uh, this year, so if that is in fact the will of the regional school committee, we'd like to engage, uh, Michael and Dana in that exercise, which had begun some time ago.
So they'll meet as the subcommittee?
Right.
For those at home who don't know.
Right. With, with Chris and Ralph Kelly, and look at, so the onsite insight report that was done by the outside consultant had many, many, many items on it, and we will plan to sit down annually with people who know the building better than we do and try and prioritize those into the earliest that things have to be done and the latest, and trying to come at a number that would have to be taken care of in this upcoming fiscal year.
Do we want to talk, are we talking about this now, or?
Well, I mean, we're just gonna call the meetings.
I don't want to throw you off.
You just go into.
Well, because there are, there were a bunch of things that were in the, we don't know if we have enough information category. Should we be kicking off a process for those as well, or?
Sure, but why don't we, doesn't the committee take that off?
Come back and tell us what you need.
What's the optimal, what is optimal timing to come to the list that we'd want to be targeting for fiscal fifteen?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
November, done!
Yeah, we were actually looking for.
I didn't bring the laptop this.
We were looking for sort of a September, October planning, and we tend, because of the different school committees treat capital differently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it involves different folks, it involves Ralph, but we also want to triangulate June Conkey into that discussion, uh, because at least with the Dover, uh, school committee, uh, technology's included in Dover capital, so.
Okay.
We're hoping to frontload all that in sort of September and October, um, so that we're not in sort of the throes of January saying, you know what, we really have to come back to capital, or, you know, when we're in the throes of budget season.
Okay.
That was our hope, was to be a little, little more.
Good. So you mean, we could hear back in November, what the great news is from this.
I intend to email tomorrow Dana and Michael to see if we can pull.
Sort of like a first, a first draft, their first look at, you know, knowing we'll refine it as we go through ISO.
Yeah.
So, Richard, when Michael and Dana presented last year, um, there was one slide that suggests, that one, a recommendation or one suggestion was that we could allot a certain amount each year, so that it's not, there are no
You mean, not specifically dollar for dollar based on what was planned.
It's a value. Smooth out the expenses.
So, so what I'm wondering is. Well, the school committee never decided what to do about that, so is that part of the charge of the subcommittee?
I think.
To see if that is the recommendation, and then if so, I would, it should be in consultation with, um, Sherburne Advisory and Dover Warren inasmuch that they should give some feedback about whether.
Yeah, I would actually recommend that.
That's what the towns are looking for.
That you guys put your policy heads together and decide whether that's a nifty idea, bring it to us, and if we think it's a nifty idea, then we will convince both of the finance committees that it's a nifty idea.
Yeah.
But, I mean, in any event, it's gonna be, from year to year, it's not gonna be very far off of, of what we're planning to spend, but as you say, it's, the idea would be to smooth out some of those bumps, um, and.
It's just such a sea change, since we've lived for ten years with thirty-five thousand in our capital.
Yeah, there's that.
Line item, it's gonna be a significant.
I'd say, let's, let's update the numbers based on the learning that we had this summer of capital projects, because that might also inform priorities and timing, so, and then we'll come back.
Good.
Okay.
There was also a request, and, and I'm curious to see where the regional school committee stands. Uh, near and dear to all of our hearts is the issue of the intermunicipal agreement, um, and the history that we've all gone through over the past couple of years with the IMA issue, and if it's in fact the, um, the will of the committee that that be something that's pursued, uh, the administration is, is happy to take that on as something that we will look into, um, with the different councils that have been involved in that, um, that matter.
So. Can you give the.
Let me speak for a minute about this, I actually wanted to put this on the agenda, um, because, for, for, for two reasons. One is I think that, that our towns would be well-served by having, uh, the intermunicipal, the IMA, um, that we have talked about and dreamed of in the past. Uh, the reason I want it on the agenda now is that, um, we have found for, what, two years running, uh, that we hit this impossible, um, time in February where too much happens, the, the, there's too much going on in terms of budget, and, uh, and we find stumbling blocks. If we're gonna do it this year, which I hope we will, I think now is the time to get started on it, to try to solve, you know, try, try to flesh out what the problems are and see if we can solve them.
So historically, we have started earlier, I think Chris can tell you when we, with the wastewater treatment, when we met with the two towns well in advance. Um, my feeling is we have spent an awful lot of legal fees, a lot of our administrators' time and into regional school committee to make this happen, that if the two towns want this to happen, they need to help make it happen. Um, I, I just, we've spent a great deal of regional money on the wastewater treatment plant and, um, probably air conditioning on legal fees alone to try and get an intermunicipal agreement. I don't disagree that that is a great vehicle by which to be able to have two towns fund things differently. History has shown us that that money didn't provide results.
Right, so, yeah, so agree, and if, and if we bang our heads against the wall again this year and fall down, then I'm, I'm absolutely done.
So, I'm not for banging my head against the wall again.
But I would, I would say, and the reason I wanted to bring it up is that, um, in the way that things have transpired, for, for those of, for those who have no idea what we're talking about, uh, the intermunicipal agreement, uh, i- is, is designed, uh, theoretically designed to allow the two towns to, um, to fund cap, project, capital projects, um, by separate mechanisms, uh, which each town can decide on the floor of town meeting, uh, how to, how to do.
I.e. from cash or from debt.
Yeah, from cash or from debt. Instead of the region for its capital project borrowing money itself and then assessing the, um, the, uh, the debt financing to the two towns. It has the potential of saving a town with a lot of cash in hand, the, um, uh, you know, the interest fees that would otherwise, you know, we would be, uh, paying and therefore assessing to the two towns. That's its major, that's its major advantage. And as we look forward to, you know, a ten, fifteen, twenty-year capital plan, we hope we're gonna be asking the towns, and the towns will be looking favorably, uh, in the next couple of decades, to continue to fund capital projects, year after year after year, so that we can maintain this lovely campus. I'd like actually to get this thing settled and behind us, so that either of our towns has a lot of free cash, they can choose, if they want to, to save a little money on the, uh, on the finance charges and, uh, and do so. That's, if, if my, if my two towns, if both of my two towns come to me and say, don't bother.
Down that track quite a few times and spent a great deal of money.
I, I understand.
But I, again, my, my brief interaction with this is, it's not necessarily a thing between the towns, it doesn't help that you can call in a DOR legal representative, and one of them says, no, you can't do it that way, and then you have bond counsel saying, no, you can't, I've spoken to somebody else at the DOR. And I think that's the, the crux of this, if you can get a consistent legal opinion on whatever vehicle.
Yeah.
That's, I think, all that, you know, selectmen from Sherburne are looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
But if their counsels talked to the same person I did, and they said, no, that's illegal, it's reason to.
It's like, our bond counsel is, their bond counsel is still responsible.
Again, if you can, if you can call any, if you can get somebody from the Department of Revenue who says he's wrong, that doesn't help dispel this issue and, and get it off the table. And that's what we need, is a consistent opinion that everyone can buy into, that's comfortable, and even counsel that's floating, you know, underwriters' counsel will buy into, because that's the next place where we could hit a problem, or a town would hit a problem.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
So where it ended last year was that Kathleen Collieri, Collieri?
Hmm.
Who is the chief legal counsel of Department of Revenue Legal Services, I think that's what it's called. She was on vacation for a good spiel, so that's why we were getting one piece of information, and when she came back, the tide was just starting to turn, she knows Rick Manley well, so I keep looking at Chris, because Chris has worked with Kathleen, Rick Manley, who's the bond counsel, has worked with her, I don't think they put anything in writing out of their office, but I, but perhaps they'd be available to, uh, meet with Rick Manley and, um.
Sherburne.
Sherburne's legal counsel.
Sherburne Town Council.
So I sent Steve an email just late this afternoon, because I think, uh, with respect to a lot of Sherburne's questions, it really is, how does the Commonwealth, what, what, what's the Commonwealth gonna say about this? So if we could get them pulled in now, we would know, and it wouldn't be for a lot of money.
So, can we say a dollar figure or something, we don't want to exceed?
Well, actually.
Because that's, in the past, Steve, what's happened is we, we've gone down this path of trying to make it work, and the cash register's running as the meetings are going, because it's the attorneys and whoever, um.
Well, but, so Barbara St. Andre, Rick Manley, and I haven't reached out to Kathleen, but are both attorney, both attorneys, St. Andre and Manley, are willing to have a discussion, uh, to come into my office and have a discussion at the table, um, about this, and that's probably not a bad investment, a little bit of time and a few dollars, and just see what that yields, I hope to be able to do that and just report back by next month's regional meeting, if that's okay with the committee, at least be able to provide an update, get a read on the, the chemistry there, and see what's happening, um, if that would be a model for that.
But that's, that doesn't have any representative from either town, it just has their legal representative, which, in the past, may have interpreted things differently to their own attorneys.
Well, that's an interesting point, and certainly would be possible to invite the, the honchos from each town to that same meeting, see if we can set it up that way. I, I absolutely agree with you, Clara, I would like to have.
You were at that meeting, I think, with me when we thought we had one, when we were told, no, we don't.
Yeah, exactly, I'd like to have a summit and be done with this.
In my.
And if, and if we can't reach an agreement, I'd like to know coming out of that meeting.
It was my strong impression with the current chair of the Sherburne Board of Selectmen is he would, he's not, does not have a legal background, he's gonna defer to counsel. His counsel says this is A-OK, that's all that Peter needs. His counsel has hesitance.
He doesn't speak for the committee.
He doesn't speak for all, but I'm just saying that.
Could I, could I suggest then that, that, uh, if, if it is the, the sense of this group, that the sense of this group is that we are willing to, uh, proceed, uh, conservatively and dis- dispatch this issue one way or the other quickly? Yeah. No?
Absolutely. And Barbara St. Andre.
So I'm in agreement for the one meeting, and then let's see.
Yeah, okay. And Barbara St. Andre emailed me about two hours ago, and Paul DeRancis has already put in a nutshell what his ongoing concerns are, so I think I have enough ammunition to kind of build on, and let's see what he gets.
So I would suggest that Rick Manley at least speak with Kathleen Collieri before the meeting.
And try to get as much of her on record as possible.
When you get a date, what would you look for?
And also, wha, if there are any variables that would cause that opinion to change over time.
Well, or, or she puts.
The best thing she does is, is just go every year and we.
Yeah.
She puts a gag order on all her other attorneys on this issue, and just refer it to one person. It doesn't help them to have inconsistent.
Can I say one last thing? Because I, I think what's gonna happen is Dover paid interest on the wastewater treatment, and it paid interest on the air conditioning for the middle school. It's, it's, it doesn't want to pay interest.
Yeah.
Now, Sherburne may say, well, that's how the agreement right, works, so if we can't have an IMA, we may have to consider something to the agreement.
We'll cross that bridge over the counter.
Exactly, but that's why I think it behooves us to have an agreement.
A disinterested investigation of the legal, of the legality of this is what we need, that's what we want, that's what we're gonna get, and then we're gonna do it.
Okay, moving on. So, so back to something fun, and then we'll go back to something a little sticky. So on August twentieth, uh, all of the administrators, uh, we had a fantastic retreat, uh, in Dover off-campus, uh, at, at actually at the Dover Church, uh, which has a phenomenal function room downstairs, and we had a terrific, it was just a great opportunity, about four or five hours together, fully functioning kitchen, potluck, lunch together, the beautiful garden out back, and we were able to, we had a two-and-a-half-page agenda, uh, that we moved through pretty quickly, and it was very interesting, because at the end, we had all twenty-two administrators from across the entire school system present, and at the end, Karen and I asked of the group, you know, would you like to have administrative meetings broken out by district? Or if you like, you know, how would you like to structure and admin meetings moving forward? That group does not want to disband, they want to stay together as a group, uh, even if not every issue is germane to each district.
Right.
But they really loved hearing what's going on at the region, hearing what's going on at the high school. I think the folks, I think Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellert and assistant headmasters really enjoyed hearing what's going on at the elementary schools, the foreign language in the elementary school program, there are all these touchpoints now, and, so we've set up an agenda for a monthly meeting the rest of the year, taking place both sides of the school hours, so no administrators are pulled from the buildings, we can continue to be circulating, doing classroom observations, so. I think it was just a, a great opportunity to come together. Would you agree, Karen?
I do, it's a great collaboration for all the administrators, especially for me, new to the district, to see everybody in the room and to share the, the same, uh, focus of making sure, aligning, ensuring each student has a quality education. I was very impressed.
Good work, collaborative effort, so, thank you. Um, we also included in your packet, uh, the, oddly enough, my consulting with a businessman, I shared a while ago, and we're gonna some about this, the minimum local contribution, which is a number, uh, given to us largely by the state, uh, was predicated originally in the MLC, Minimum Local Contribution Number, was built on the governor's original budget for fiscal fourteen that was put out in January this year. And minimum local contributions literally changed, uh, by the time the final budget was put out by the state. And when I consulted with Chris on this, I said, has this ever happened in your recollection where the minimum local contribution for member towns of regional school districts literally changed from the governor's first run of the budget to the final budget? And we both shook our heads and said we had no recor, no recollection of that happening. And the net effect of that is that the minimum local contribution went up for Dover and down by the same amount for Sherburne. And so upon learning this, I notified the vice chair and chair of the regional school committee, wrapped in letters to both town administrators, and had a phone conversation about three o'clock this afternoon, a second with town administrator Dave Ramsey in Dover, uh, concerning this matter, because for Dover, essentially, it's forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, in that ballpark. And the net effect of that is that that is an additional amount of money that, that Dover would be putting forward in terms of the assessment schedule that was put together for the fiscal fourteen budget. Sherburne's contribution went down by that same amount, so I haven't heard from Sherburne on it, I didn't really expect to, uh, being that the news is different, but I certainly did want to, and I've had two conversations with Dave Ramsey, he does not anticipate an issue with it, and he's in touch with counsel on that, and can do a special appropriation for that, uh, but he certainly can't dictate necessarily what will happen with that as it's dispensed at the May for, the May of two thousand fourteen town meeting. So I was incumbent on me to notify, obviously, the regional school committee of that as well.
Let me lay out what I, I think I understand one last question. Um, this is a consequence of using the statutory method for assessment rather than the regional form, right? That's how the minimum local contribution goes into this calculation.
Correct.
And, and you, when we were preparing the budget, used the figures that were being bandied about, but they got changed at some point after we had approved it, in fact, after the ten forty budget.
The DOE actually publishes, uh, the minimum local contribution, and as, uh.
Yeah.
Steve said it's, I've never seen a change in my entire career in government, so, and it's because the governor was trying to bring everyone up, um, as far as the minimum local contribution based on the wealth of the communities. Dover and Sherburne were paying substantially more than other communities, um, and were being adversely affected by that.
So, what, the part that's unclear to me is that we passed, we, we gave out assessments, we had promises from both towns for that amount of money. Why is it, why is it that, that anybody cares at this point? What's the, what's the, what's the driver here that says, we need this from you, and, and maybe we're gonna give this back, but we don't actually have to recruit this? Is it just that, that this is how the state tells us to do a business?
That number is prescribed to us by, by the state, so to the extent that Sherburne would say, well, you know what, that assessment schedule, it just so happened to work out that way, that Sherburne would say, well, the assessment schedule that was passed as part of the operating budget actually requires less money from the town of Sherburne and a little bit more money between the forty-fourth day from Dover, each of the two member towns would, would care.
You know, I understand that, but, but as I, as I, as I understand the, the state, uh, advice on this, we're not required to give money back to Sherburne, because Sherburne said, okay, here's our money. Isn't that, that's what, that's what they said.
They've already voted appropriations at town meeting.
Yeah.
What, what Dave Ramsey communicated today was that in a, in a situation you did not see happening, but it's not outside the realm, was that Dover ultimately could contribute to the region's operation forty-four thousand dollars less than we're depending on to make ends meet. So when all, when the dust settles at the May two thousand fourteen town meeting, theoretically, and he did not think at all that this would occur, but we could actually receive forty-four thousand dollars less from the town of Dover, because they're not on the hook for that other but for the vote at the town meeting. And then the regional school committee would have to make a decision to either lower its budget or to make other appropriations.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand.
Wouldn't it be Sherburne?
Sherburne.
No, we would be, we would, so if Dover, Dover would be expected to contribute forty-four thousand dollars more to the operation than what was voted upon, so theoretically Dover could say, no.
Yeah.
And therefore, we would be, uh, we, our budget would come short of that, of that, what we need to.
No, but, but I'm sorry, Steve, if Dover's already said, we're gonna give you all this money, now the state is saying, by the way, Dover should give you forty-four thousand more.
Correct.
But it's already committed to everything but that extra amount, right? And Sherburne is already committed to everything, we have a balanced budget based on the, the commitments of the two towns.
But to balance that, so Sherburne could contribute forty-four thousand dollars less, we need the offsetting amount from Dover.
Yeah, is Sherburne legally required to commit that now that the state says that isn't the amount that you owe?
Right.
As I read the state recommendation, yes, they are, they made a promise at town meeting to give us that amount of money.
And I think that one potential consequence is just to add yet another pile of issues, whether it's the in- interest on debt that some people didn't want to finance, or.
Right.
A million other things, I mean, we only want to be carrying so much baggage around.
In our good neighborly way of working with the two towns, this makes it.
I agree, we, no, I, I'm not trying to stir up the horniness here, I'm actually trying to understand, I'm trying to get over that, you know?
This will probably adjust itself at the next, regardless of what you do, it will adjust itself on the next go-around budgetarily. Because I don't see the minima, minimum local contribution unless the governor, whoever he is, decides to do the same thing and give huge amounts of money of, get chapter seventy, I don't envision that happening after what we saw this year.
I'm sorry, Chris, we're not gonna get FY fourteen.
I'm talking FY fifteen, it will adjust.
So, well, it will, but FY fifteen's number isn't gonna have any carryforward of this issue from FY fourteen.
Steve Hemm, who oversees the Nassas Association of Regional School Committees, uh, looked for written correspondence from regions, and I provided something in writing to his office to say, this is really an opportunity, you know? I said, please share that with our, um, to whatever extent.
Steve says it's an opportunity.
Well, it's, it's incredible that, you know, I mean, just think of, this was a responsible body, but think of the regions that build their budgets predicated on the governor's original budget for huge issues. I mean, when we're, when the dust settles, so.
Three, four, five, ten.
Please don't do that again.
Yeah.
Richard, in terms of how things are going?
Yeah.
They're going smoothly.
Yeah, let's not.
You okay with that? You okay with that? On this issue?
I'm waiting to go for a signal.
I ask the question.
It's going smoothly, so don't rock the boat.
I'd, I'd be happy not to rock the boat, but, you know, there's, go ahead. Mary.
My question is, if this goes before Dover town meeting, and Dover does vote to appropriate the, the extra forty-two or forty-two thousand, what happens to that, to the forty-two thousand that Sherburne has already appropriated? In other words, now, it, in other words, there's this number of ninety odd thousand dollars, and if you add another forty to it, now the region has been appropriated, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand, but that's not really the number, it's ninety thousand, so what happens to the forty thousand?
No, because in the, in the revised assessment schedule that's included in the packet, it has Sherburne contributing, contributing forty-four thousand dollars less this year, so we wouldn't realize forty-four thousand dollars more revenue, would be sort of looking to Dover to say, you know, please, please provide that which Sherburne has not, was not now on the hook to provide.
So, so Sherburne, at, at some point, we stop paying?
Well. Well, you have forty-four thousand.
Yeah, I would point to the revised schedule. It's in the hands of Dave Ramsey.
In the FY fourteen budget, there would be an unusual forty-four thousand dollar quote "turnback" of money not spent under the assessment line, right? From a budget perspective, whereas there's never a turnback on that one, because it always comes out at zero.
If Sherborn does nothing, at some point, let's say in mid-April, we just start paying our bills?
No, you have to be reassessed legally.
Right. No, go stop paying your bills.
The region would vote, if it was all agreed to, at their town meeting, Dover decided, the regional school committee would re-vote the assessments, and you would all be reassessed based on that differential. And it would probably be made up in the last month of the assessment that you pay. Say your assessment's a million two in each month. You'd end up paying a million two minus forty-four if the regional committee, you know, reassessed.
It's sort of an holding pattern until the May town meeting.
Right, I said April, I mean, you know, whenever.
So you anticipate then getting approval from Dover Town Meeting
I do.
to increase its FY fourteen assessment.
Mr. Ramsey intends to put forward what's called a supplemental appropriation for the May two thousand fourteen town meeting in Dover. And notwithstanding some kind of a catastrophe from that, we will be ready to rock and roll with the revised assessments.
And does the same vote happen in reverse in Sherborn?
No.
You'd never up those.
It's been possible. Oh, that sounds good. Go ahead. One of the, another change at the, really, it's a system-wide change. And we had talked about this a little bit last spring. Concerns an attempt to really meet the needs of all of our students in the most inclusive model possible. And a number of students in our system have language-based learning issues, challenges. And that is in fact a catalyst for why some of our students wind up being placed at other schools. And you'll recall, several meetings, and as embedded in my goals, is a real attempt to better equip and better train the staff here at the region, and in fact, in all three school districts, on meeting the needs of students in terms of language-based strategies with teachers. So it's a two-pronged approach. And one is that we have been in contact with the Landmark School, which is on the North Shore, which has a huge staff development component to their operation. And Ann Larson and Dan Ahern, who run the staff development program there, have been out to meet with us several times, including last Friday afternoon with myself, Dr. Ladue, as well as the three special ed directors from all districts. And we have embedded in the fabric of the professional development calendar for the year staff development for both regular and special educators, system-wide, in terms of helping to build their tool belt and their strategies in meeting the needs of students who otherwise, and in the absence of trained staff, could very well have wound up out of district place. As a result of this program, we've already seen three students who would have been outplaced and now who are, in fact, staying within our school system for this school year. So the parents are thrilled, the kids are acclimating well, and it's just, it's spectacular.
At the region, so they're at the region, right?
They're within the system. I know what I'm identifying from that, but. There, so we have staff development that's now taking place across all three districts. And then we've brought in a language-based special educator at the region who has reading credentials in three of the major programs that one would look to in terms of being able to meet students' needs. And that teacher is literally assigned to the students who are now in district, some of them who are in district. And she's also providing staff development and working with regular education teachers to be able to build their strategies and tool belts. So the fact that we were able to sort of pull that off with all that staff development that will be Title I-based, Dr. Ladue has written a Title I grant for fiscal fourteen with residual money that remains in Title I for fiscal thirteen, pays for that entire landmark staff development program. And the special educator, we've also been able to recoup and to be able to finance that position as well at the region. So it's...
So what is it planned, because this is brand-new?
Brand-new.
How do we evaluate? As you're talking, I'm thinking, "Okay, it's all brand-new. It's all these new teachers". How do we know if it's working, not working?
I mean, we're just literally week two into it. The teacher was hired in early August. And we wish, we really held out to find the best, the most highly qualified person. And we had hoped that had happened a bit earlier, because we really would have liked to have sent that person to the landmark training over the summer, but it was more important to find the right person. So we're now in regular contact with the families and with the classroom teachers and doing some aggressive monitoring of students that are now in the districts to be able to make sure that those needs are being met. We don't want this to fall into this, obviously. But it's really, I mean, not, totally separate apart from the money, the fact that the students wanna be in the school system. They should be in the school system. We should have, for a lot, been doing this kind of work, the work of the students. So it's one step in the direction of curtailing the out-of-district placements, not only, and certainly not formally, it's not financially motivated, but in terms of providing a least restrictive environment and keeping kids in district.
So is this staff member going to be working with students currently on IEPs here, but marginally might be placed if we weren't successful? Or is he or she working with the three who are coming in? Just want concretely...
So, three-pronged approach. One is that, so Mrs. Nathanson is her name, so Gail, Gail Nathanson will be working and doing some work at the middle school in terms of students that we know to have a profile that may in fact wind up being students that could be placed. We certainly work at the high school. And then also working with the out-of-district coordinator to manage cases, to be able to look at cases, students who may already be out of district place, to determine if there's capacity there to return students to district.
So in terms of how do we assess, we can see if some who are on the margin end up going out of placement, or if we can keep them here, the success of the ones that come back here. So we have IEPs to look at.
Well, I mean, qualitative and quantitative measures. So I know that, you know, Miss Teague has a meeting to go over where we stand with out-of-district numbers and the finances, so that clearly will be a quantitative measure there. We hope to have a direct effect on that for the towns in terms of real dollars for the current fiscal year. And then, you know, qualitatively, working with the students, getting anecdotal information and empirical data from teachers. But we have to be on top of this to make sure the students aren't falling behind. It's a quantum leap to step into this school system.
So this sixty thousand, we figure out how to pay for it this year. Next year, it would be a new line item in the budget, the sixty thousand. We wouldn't be looking to find it here, there, and ever. I support that completely. The money does flow back to the towns, but it is all the same bucket we're going after. So I just wanna put it there. It'll be added to our budget next year.
But it will reduce, hopefully, like Steve said, it will reduce your out-of-district. So from a budgetary perspective to them, it's a net zero.
Absolutely. So I support it.
From the town.
From the town. So I support it. But the region needs to recognize that it's covered this year, but not going forward.
I would say that further, it would be very valuable instructing to itemize those savings specifically as a result of this change, because we are gonna see an increase in the budget. And we want to be a teller town. You see this line over here in your budget? It's a lot less.
Right, right.
And I'd like to know if this is gonna be yourself. I mean, if it's a wash, great. If it's better than a wash, you know?
So in your new report, it looks like there's thirty students in district at the grade five level between the two elementaries. Has any work been done to evaluate of those thirty will be, again, have, be able to reinforce to the towns? This program will also meet the needs of some portion of those children that are about to transition next summer?
So we have, the Landmark School support that we have in place is targeted right now towards students who populate classes at the elementary schools in grades three, four, and most prominent, grade five. So that we are creating that safety net so that we don't even get into the realm of discussion or replacement, which is typically when those discussions will begin to ease, fifth to sixth, and then certainly from eighth.
Because the model of delivery of special education services and language-based services changes from the elementary school to the middle school to the high school. And so that's why those questions come up, from the demands.
But Ann Larson from Landmark is phenomenal to have. The three special ed directors, they've all committed and mapped out exactly when she'll be in which building. It's been quite a bit of work, you know? I mentioned a few other children.
And it is, it is something that's being diagnosed. We know more and more often, and more of our students have it, and teachers are seeing it in students' work. So it's a great way to help solve that.
Thank you. I think we've covered most of the items on my report. Dr. Ladue?
It's been...
Did you want to believe? Do you need to vote for you?
Yeah, I figured we would come back for the votes.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
It's fine with me. But before you start, Nancy, welcome.
Thank you so much. And I wanna echo that warm welcome that I've received from the staff, the school committees. And just this past Wednesday, when I was able to see some students come back, and the teachers, of course, come back, and that the buildings come alive. And that's what Steve and I have been waiting for all summer long. We missed them. Just wanted to know that. But a warm welcome from Chris, Steve, and the entire administration. So I very much appreciate that. As you know, the DES is implementing the new educator evaluation system, and I've been working closely with the administrative staff to design that training for all of our educators so that we can be systemic in the way we approach that, you know, professional growth and evaluation tool that was so carefully crafted. I can't tell you how wonderful it was to read that and see the thought that went into the development of that. I've revised the district educator evaluation website, so if you wanna take a look. It has all of the pertinent information for the educators posted right there. And we, I spent today, actually, with the middle school and the high school doing some training on Baseline Edge, which is the software tool that houses the electronic version of all of the mini-observation forms, the goal-setting form, all of those things that are associated with that professional growth and evaluation tool. And met it with wide success when we were able to spend that time. And I think the headmasters and assistant headmasters in both of those realms will do that same training at Chicker and Pineville. I'm meeting with the curriculum leaders along the way to develop some agendas and norms for their work with their new teams, for those who are assimilating new curriculum leader or department head positions and having conversations with them about that and how to further the agenda for the universal understanding by design curriculum templates and all of those things that are happening. Great work in Dover Sherborn. Certainly worked collaboratively with Steve to assure the success of all the new administrators in the district. It has been a great process and a conversation, so I'm thrilled to be able to do that. You heard, completed the federal grants. But going forward, that's just the past eight weeks. Going forward, it's thinking clearly. Working with the assistant principals and the assistant headmasters to provide a sort of a streamlined approach to the forecast of data for two thousand and thirteen. And we'll present that concise and uniform presentation to the school committees, the regional, Dover and the Sherborn, in October. And then the Program for International Student Assessment, the PISA results. I'll work with the high school administration on how to present that data going forward. And I know Mr. Smith will talk to you about the ACT and IEP exams later in his report. But certainly have received great insights into the Dover Sherborn public schools, and I thank everyone for their support in that endeavor.
It's just been phenomenal having Karen on board. I watched her today present to the middle school and high school faculty. Just, it's really wonderful to have a partner in now Karen, and certainly in Chris, who has been someone that you can turn to. And things are done and taken care of. It's remarkable the amount that's been shifted to Karen's plate in recent weeks. And I thank you both for your job exceptionally well done. It's a good team.
It is.
Wait, Chris?
Wait.
Chris has found such a shift. Chris has found such a shift somewhere. There's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on. So we wanna shift to the votes from the items. A quick update on...
No, actually, before we... Welcome, Mr. Bliss, to the table here as superintendent. First time, at least, on camera. Sorry, I forgot that at the beginning of the meeting. Now to the votes.
I appreciate that. There isn't a better place to be.
You don't get that.
He says that on September. All right, we'll see. We'll talk to you.
Let's run that back in.
Way back when, seemingly years ago, when you looked at the TEC agreement, a lot of legal changes have happened with collaboratives across the state. And neither TEC nor Accept has actually received approval of its plan document from the DESE. So I know you signed off on a document last spring. That was actually just a version of the document. It was a TEC document that I think this committee signed off on, maybe one of the other school committees signed off on. Liz McGonigal, the new executive director of TEC, sort of put up a flag to every, all the superintendents. So that has actually not been approved by the DESE yet, and still has not been to date. So I will certainly keep you updated. I'm now attending all the TEC and Accept meetings. There are two issues though. One is their plan document. And the second is that we do need a favorable vote, hopefully favorable, from the three school committees appointing me as the board member to those collaboratives. Because of the nature of our construct, the DES, with three school committees and the way we are set up, I need to provide to the executive directors of both collaboratives meeting minutes indicating from all three school committees that I was in fact voted as the board member.
We did do it on June. It's in the June eleven, vote thirteen, fourteen. But that's just TEC. But if you wanna do both of them together, so you can...
We could re-vote it.
Seven minutes, it might be easier for you.
It would be, because they're gonna scowl at the minutes.
All right, so let's just do it twice. All right, can I start the motion?
Please.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the superintendent of schools as the voting member of TEC on behalf of the regional school committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was mine.
I think that's your job, right? Any discussion? Work well together. All right. And then I would also like to make a motion to appoint the superintendent of schools as the voting member of Accept on behalf of the regional school committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Steve.
Six initial meetings?
Well, I thought in case they need to see it separately, it was easier.
Thank you. The Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan is referenced in one of the NASC summer pieces. There was a change to the bullying law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven oh as defined. And it has to do with the scope of staff members in the statute. So the BPIPE, that you've been provided, that was provided electronically to you, the highlighted sections in red reference the verbiage changes in the law. There was an active BPIPE?
Well, those acronyms.
The Bullying Prevention...
The BPIPE.
So I would love to entertain...
I'm still on summer mode.
We would love to have a favorable vote of the regional school committees so that we can move forward in submitting, resubmitting this to the state towards what we are currently with the bullying prevention.
Do you agree with this?
I do. It actually just is more far-reaching and includes coaches and cafeteria workers. So they could be reporting.
Just making sure you like it before we...
I love it, Dana.
I'd like to know that we accept the changes to the BPIPE as outlined in red in our packet.
So moved? You moved it? Second, or Michael second, yeah.
Is there a discussion? Yes, there is. And that is, this is a change to our policy. And we have a policy manual, which, this is going to all three school committees?
It is.
So our approval is going to be, we hope, here with the other two school committees. And then it will become a policy of the three, of all of us. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
All of us are favored, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
You there, Miss? Thank you. You have, in your packet, two obsolescence declarations, both at the reason, obviously. One from the IT director dated mid-August, August twenty-first, and Jean Conkey has detailed herein equipment that she wishes to declare obsolete, in large part because the equipment will not run, will not run on Windows seven, it's broken, just is equipment that's simply not used. The laptops that are referenced in her memo have literally all been cannibalized for parts to the extent possible. And this is a takeaway, actually, from our administrative retreat where we talked about having a standard protocol for declaring taxpayer purchase equipment obsolete. And so Jean immediately, coming back from that retreat, put a memo together and wanted to make sure that she, you know, which she's, by the way, historically done, just as a matter of summer cleanup kind of thing, we wanted to be able to memorialize this process for all departments. So she did so, and this, on the science textbooks, this is an obsolescence declaration back from June that went to Denise Longigan at the time as headmaster, and Mr. Smith has done some work to ensure that in fact these biology and environmental science textbooks were either in such a state of disrepair that they were irreparable, or that they had in fact, because of curriculum content, had become outdated. He confirmed that in conversations after we moved the science department.
Any other...
Should we make a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion to accept the both obsolescence, do you want to do it in the same one or different?
Same.
All right, the obsolescence memoranda put forth by Jean Conkey, and this is, whatever, the two on IT and textbooks, Ms. Longigan.
Okay.
Any discussion?
So, I mean, do get obsolete it. Do we know if there are any of them in reasonable enough shape that, you know, it could be donated to somebody in the community that could make them available, you know, wipe them and bring them back up to speed so that, you know, so much of our work, kids do need computers available at home to access just the internet and just to do word processing, that we would have some resources available for families in need as it came up. I mean, I'm sure many of these are really beat up and would never meet that criterion, but if you even had a pool of five of them or ten of them, that an outside organization could be, you know, one of the parent groups or something like that could meet that need.
We actually looked, so what we've done historically is looked for the vote from the school committee, first, that kind of gives us the latitude to be able to engage in maybe special education needs a couple laptops for students for short-term kind of borrowing, or whatever it is that we're able to kind of redeploy the equipment from its intended purpose, but absent the vote from the school committee...
Correct, now, once we've obsolete it, I was just curious.
I have a question about the biology textbooks, because it wasn't just the textbooks, I think that it was a whole program kind of a thing, and they're not that old. Could they be sold? Could we...
Well, they are that old.
How old are they?
Two thousand and three is now, it's recent.
Ten to fifteen years old, eighteen years old.
Ten years of, yeah, ten years in the high school environment for a biology textbook.
Is there, I'm just asking if there's any kind of...
Actually, evolution wasn't in...
That is discouraging. Yeah, that they would be valuable to...
Could we get any money for it?
I would, I would...
Well, it'd be worth investigating.
Maybe worth one, you know?
Five bucks, a decent amount.
It's cool, I'd find that.
Yeah, we could easily just...
I mean, I'll do it.
You are higher than I am.
But no care.
What I usually work for.
I'm going to give you ten percent, because you're not going to find any... I, I maybe will. Any else?
Before we leave that, Steve, will you just talk a little bit about PARK that I read about?
Absolutely.
So...
So, did we vote?
Did we?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Any other discussion on these motions for obsolescence? All is in favor?
Right.
So...
Also?
I didn't hear a second.
Will you please thank her for formalizing this? I think this kind of process and standardization is awesome. So to the extent that these kind of things happen, I mean, it's all good. So thank her for that, please.
We will do that. Thanks, thank you very much. So PARK is intended ultimately to be a replacement for MCAS at some point down the line, and it's been something of a moving target in terms of, it's an assessment of college and career readiness, and it's unlike MCAS, it's more performance and skill-based in terms of determining students' readiness for post-secondary environment.
I just have to just for a second, I don't mind discussing, this is a wonderful idea, where is it in our agenda, if any? Do we have anything on PARK in our packet?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Blanket.
Is a superintendent.
Could you explain, oh, that's fine, could you explain the PARK?
Sure.
Is it P A R K?
P A R C C.
And Karen, do you want us to speak to that?
Sure, it's the Partnership for the Assessment of the Readiness of College and Career.
Thank you.
And it, does that, you just want the acronym, or keep going? It's an assessment that will be given to students in grades three through eleven in the LA in mathematics with the future looking at science also, but it has not been developed. And there will be a performance assessment in March, which Steve has spoken to, where, for example, a sixth grader would look at three pieces of information, synthesize that information, and then write to a prompt that gives how does the mosquito pass Lyme disease on to humans? And by reading those three different street things, they will be able to synthesize that information, that's the performance-based. At the end of the year will be a skills-based assessment in June, which would, is a lot like the MCAS, which you see currently on the MCAS. It's in development, they are ready to pilot, so...
Who's they?
Yeah, who's they? Massachusetts or something?
Thank you for correcting the Royal Bay, opposed to the Royal Week. The states, forty-seven states signed on for the Common Core state standards. I don't remember how many chose to go with either, there are two assessments being developed, PARK and Smarter Balance. Is that the right name?
I heard Marge.
I get confused about the button.
That's smart balance. They say smarter than the...
Smarter Balance. That's why I get confused.
Wait a minute, which goes the margin?
Smart, we're smarter.
Massachusetts chose to lead the charge for the PARK. So we are, we have, Massachusetts has adopted the PARK to replace the MCAS as a state. So we will be administering the PARK to all of our grades three through eleven students, starting, piloting this year, and then for the years to come, gradually replacing the MCAS with the PARK assessments.
So Karen, what I'm reading on the MASC list, this is where I got it, big blog, is that districts were randomly chosen...
Correct.
...to, for the benefit of the company that's developing the PARK test, pilot questions.
Correct.
And that those districts, which I think one, two, or three of our districts have been selected...
Correct.
...have been asked to pilot test practice questions for a company that's developing the test on listserv. There are a number of districts saying to their superintendents, I want you to opt out of this, you know, we have enough, don't have enough time in the day as it is, why are we testing something somebody else is going to be making money off of? Which is what raised it to me, just to ask the question as to what is it, where is it going?
Let me, let me just ask a...
How does it relate to us?
A slightly contextual question, those are important questions, we need to have discussion about this. You probably all need more input on this. The question I have right now is, what's the timeline, can we, as a system, for, to put off that probing discussion and some decision about whether to partake until October? Do we actually, is this federally compliant, or are we already...
So I received correspondence last week from the US Department of Education through Dr. Chester's office indicating that Dover Sherborne had been chosen. Of course, the first question, what Dover Sherborne, is it Dover's or Sherborne's? So I didn't want to ask the question, so I had to bring attention to ourselves, so I decided to wait a bit, and I'm supposed to have correspondence tonight, tomorrow, indicating which, exactly which district, but the initial correspondence indicates that administrators have to participate in a training session, the webinar or training session, those are slated over the next two weeks, so...
But in terms of committing our kids to these tests for this year, is that, A, do we have any choice, or is this something that is just the heavy hammer of the D E S E? And if we do have a choice, when do we have to make that choice? Because I won't have this discussion, but I'm not sure that...
It read to me like you could ask to opt out, whether they would like you to opt out or not.
Right.
It's not just our kids, it's our administrators too.
It's everything, yeah.
It's all just, it's all just come to light in the last couple of weeks.
Right, so my point is, when can, when can we, if it's not too late, when can we have a more uniform discussion on our agenda?
I am quite certain that I could write to the US Department of Education indicating that our school committee, if in fact the region is selected, would like to take it up at its October reading, but beyond that, we couldn't have this committee do it, we're fine with that. The other part of the flip side to that is that PARK has been moved out a couple of times in its will of, and arguably there's some benefit to going through the exercise, because it could, you know, expose the students to a types of questions, apply them to the test. There is, you know...
I would think there's some positive things to have everyone understand, and we're going from this with MCAS to something that's potentially very different.
Totally computer-based.
Early, earlier the better, because then, particularly if you're working on computer things.
We have the polls of the discussion, excellent, let's pick it up in October if we can do that, if that's all right, move on. And can we combine that with a little deeper understanding of Common Core?
Sure.
Because obviously they're connected, right?
Just wants hope. And Ann, we're going to, Ann will slide to him, yes? We'll get it right back.
And smart balance.
All right, that's not too soon, too soon.
Were you all set, Dr. Ladoo?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss Tim Stakes?
Oh, I thought you were going to call me Tim.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, I thought I'd bring you flowers tonight, of course, but I'm empty-handed because of all the projects you had going on this summer.
Oh, thank you.
And then I thought Steve is starting his first, oh Karen's starting, oh John, so nothing.
The room would be filled with flowers.
So nothing, but I did think of you.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Well, I'd like to give everyone a very warm welcome. As you see, we do not have air conditioning in the library as of yet, so I'll start off on the capital, if that's all right. We met, we've been meeting every week with the general contractor who's automatic temperature controls, and they have done an outstanding job of trying to get at least the classroom ready and open for school, which they were successful. We are still tweaking the system. The library, the core room, and the music room are the last, we're waiting on coils for the library. The spine, we're still waiting on the rooftop unit, it's a good-sized unit, and it takes quite a while to get prepared and shipped. We found out today that probably, that spine will not be delivered probably till the end of September. I thought maybe mid-September, but based on, they opt, the contractor is pushing the manufacturer, but they can only control so much of that. The coils were shipped, they were supposed to be shipped Friday, they were, and the contractor actually drove up to get the coils for the library, and they did try to get it going for tonight, but it didn't happen, as you can see. And in response to Steve's, I do think we have a good team. I was falling asleep just when I... As far as the other projects are going, because of, we will get all the additional one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in projects, done and completed between now and the end of the school year, based upon, you know, vacation schedules and things such as that. The biggest piece of that one twenty-two is the tile flooring, and given the magnitude of the size of that, we really need to go out to public bid. There's no way we could feasibly get that done with the air conditioning all in the same building at the same time. So we'll have that ready to roll for the close of summer next year. So that should finish the capital project. Our wastewater treatment is operational, and so far all of our testing has come back very positive. I caution us at this particular point in time, because our flows definitely drop off in the summer months, I think the test of time will be the next few months. But even in June, when the flows were significantly up there, we passed with flying colors. I did notify the DEP, we had a change of operator of record. So we'll keep your post there. I'm not going to read the whole report, because it's pretty lengthy as a result of it being a year-end report. So the good news is, while we haven't actually got E and D certified, that's excess deficiency or what you towns would consider free cash, we submitted last week, and I have to applaud with all the new staff, even in the finance department, what an outstanding job to get the books closed, the auditors are in today, and the certification should be done hopefully within another week or two. It's already in, they just have to review it with the Department of Rev and Jim Magid. So they did a great job, but our, we are anticipating E and D at this particular point, and again, I caution everyone, because until it's certified, to come in at three point seven six percent of the FY fourteen operating budget. By law, we can't exceed five percent. That represents a balance of about seven hundred and, I believe, sixty-four thousand dollars. So I think that's pretty good, considering we used a significant amount of E and D for the FY fourteen budget.
Are we looking for a vote on the transfers?
Yes, the transfers, this is just more routine.
Before we get to those votes or questions, any discussion going?
So the closeout of the CDC deficit, which was like three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, was that what was shown in past budget presentations is sitting out there? Did that number change much? Because I don't, I don't recall, I don't remember seeing one.
It started at three, three oh two, Michael, and it went up to three sixty-two for the last liability for the...
Pensions and...
For county retirement. And that's it. I mean, that'll complete that.
And in, in the past, when you've been presenting free cash numbers or E and D numbers to us, have you been netting that three hundred thousand out of the past numbers?
Yes, because that, that would be how the D O I would do it.
Okay.
So we were in overstating...
Okay, so there's only really about fifty, sixty thousand impact to E and D to finally get it off the books?
No, we actually set up a liability, so it's completely off the books. That seven sixty-four is already netted that liability, the future liability.
Correct, but we were around at three hundred and weighted it being three sixty-seven, so it was a little bit of an adverse, but not much.
Right.
Okay, I would move that we approve the transfers as outlined in the report.
Seven?
Any discussion?
So I think just for the public, we say that this is a routine manner to close out the books, with transfer funds from a line item with a balance to a line item that has been underfunded, correct?
Anything else? All is in favor?
We should before we go, I really would just like to take another opportunity to just thank Chris and her staff for so many nights this summer, when we would be there working at six and seven o'clock at night, it felt like going out and buying up the barbecue or something like that, because it was just a warm summer night, and the payroll staff was up there, and the assistant business manager, Chris was there. I mean, we left off that we're in negotiations, enormous amount of work that's been put up in this office to plot data for negotiations, coupled with twelve capital projects, closing books, the auditors coming in, a payroll conversion.
Fifty new hires.
Yeah, processing fifty-four new staff.
New email software.
Yeah.
Platform.
That's just the line.
We actually are hoping for some. So thank you, Chris.
So when I ask you for my vacation at a...
Would it be too much to hope that the new payroll personnel staff have made those fifty-three hires nice and...
Oh, yeah. And so didn't, I think, the transition in the central office secretarial staff? We've streamlined quite a bit.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Brooks, anything to add?
I think we, uh, we're done from the central office.
Yep. Uh, we will move on and to the high school report. Mr. Smith, welcome to you.
Welcome, thank you. Great to have you. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Bliss and members of the regional school committee for giving me the opportunity to present my first, uh, regional school committee meeting. Very, very exciting. Uh, we opened, um, really on a, on a really high positive note. Had six hundred and fifty-seven students enter our building last Wednesday. Two days prior to that, uh, our teachers entered, uh, full of enthusiasm, rested, uh, tanned, great stories of, uh, summer getaways. But really, the life of the building came true when our students arrived. And I have to say, um, for me, that, that has been truly spectacular to have that opportunity. We have such great kids here, highly motivated students, highly organized parents. I, I really want to thank the PTO for also all of their help and support in getting the year off to a great note with their planners. It's so interesting in this community how important and valued those planners are. And I think it's just, culturally, it's ingrained and it's fantastic. Uh, so that really has been, uh, a wonderful start. And, um, everything has really, to this point, gone very, very well. We have welcomed an incoming freshman class of a hundred and sixty-seven freshmen. It is not our largest class, but it is certainly bigger than our current seniors who run a hundred and, I think, a hundred and forty-three. Um, as Mr. Bliss had mentioned, on August twentieth, we had the opportunity to meet as somebody new to the district. That was a tremendous opportunity to get to work with a lot of highly dedicated professionals. Uh, I've had the pleasure of working with Scott on several topics already and I think we've really established a great rapport. Uh, Scott and I have talked about meeting monthly in addition to our other meetings, uh, just to find ways to, um, transition our students and really keep them at the forefront of our thoughts. So, thank you to Scott and all of his support and, and help each and every day. In your packet, you can see there's a number of, uh, things that were included. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out, our student achievement with our most recent AP results. AP results were quite strong yet again, um, across the board. Over ninety-eight percent of our students scored a three or higher on the exam, with forty-six percent of our students receiving, um, a five, at least, a five on one of those exams. And our mean score was four point two four compared to the Massachusetts state average of three point two six. But, um, what really is impressive is our, our enrollment in APs has increased. Uh, it's something that I'm certainly going to be looking at as a way to enhance our curriculum and provide even greater opportunities for our kids. It's something I've discussed with department chairs as well. Clearly, this, uh, community values, uh, the Advanced Placement Program and I'd like to see it extend beyond what we are currently offering, whether that be a number of courses, also increasing enrollment. We'll be looking at that. ACT test results as well. In many cases, uh, in all the cases, actually, those scores were higher than state and national averages. And, um, as you know, the ACT has become more and more common for students to be using for their college application process. And we're going to be examining, I think, over the next couple of years, looking at, um, ACT plan for college readiness. There's opportunities there as well. Uh, so there's certainly places where the district can, in fact, improve even upon the strong results that we're already seeing. Uh, just this afternoon, uh, information that has really just kind of caught off the presses, I received a notification that we have six national, um, maras semifinals, which is outstanding. Those, uh, names are, um, under lock and key until September eleventh, when the media release goes out. But I did want to let the regional school committee know that we had, uh, six students, which I thought was absolutely outstanding. Um, in the areas of curriculum and learning, as Mr. Bliss had talked about before, um, the high school is fully engaged in understanding by design, backward design. And, um, we will be working throughout this school year, in addition to our professional growth and evaluation work and our SMART goals, those really will be the major focuses. Uh, we have a number of departments that are in different places. Uh, and in fact, September eleventh, at our early release professional development day, one of the tasks that the departments will be working on will be an assessment of where they are in reporting out to me in their process for understanding by design. The district has put forward a lot of resources and considerable, uh, financial resources as well for this and it's something that we are all dedicated towards. It's also really, um, the best model when you are designing curriculum. The backward design through research and through our own performance results has shown that that truly is the way for us to go. Uh, in addition, uh, Living Fine Technical Arts, they, um, met, I know that, um, Mr. Bliss organized a meeting and as to, uh, Dr. Le Duke, for them to, uh, meet, sort of review where they were. So that was an outstanding opportunity for, uh, the three districts to meet and discuss where they were with UBD. Uh, at our professional development teacher days, um, and I won't list or read through the entire list, but we covered a lot of ground in those days. Some of the highlights really were looking at five oh four, looking at IEP implementation, uh, stressing the professional growth and evaluation models and looking at SMART goals. Um, in addition, as many of you have talked about tonight, we moved to the Google platform. So there's a whole technological, uh, wave that we are, uh, working through. And our faculty is pretty excited about it. I love it personally, because I think it's also going to provide our students with a great opportunity to share documents and to work collaboratively, especially if we think about twenty-first century skills and we think about students having that opportunity to work in a collaborative nature. Google is just one piece of that, but it is a way in which our students can actually interact by sharing documents, even if they're not face-to-face.
John, the other thing that's nice about that is it's not, you don't have to buy a license for the software.
Yes.
So in terms of making software affordable for people at home, it's something that everyone can have access to, which is also nice.
Right, when we held, we held class meetings for each of our classes the first day that students came back and we talked about the idea that, um, their ability for access and space, uh, on the network was going to increase greatly as a result, because that was something that with first class, they struggled with, some of their larger files. And because it's web-based, that's going to be very, very effective. Um, as has been mentioned, um, major focus, uh, with professional growth and evaluation system. Uh, we've been fortunate to hire Patty Grenier from Teachers Twenty-One, who has already presented twice to administrators in addition to the department chairs. So department chairs have been an active participant in this and that has really been extremely helpful, because they are the content, uh, experts. So we've been working with them, we will continue to follow up with Patty and work all through the fall on this new model. And the nice part about it is it allows us to calibrate with one another. So we'll actually be going through exercises, looking at evaluations, looking at instructional practices and working together and talking through to say, what makes a great lesson? You know, it's got to be more than just, well, you, you know, you see it. Well, we need some real qualitative data to show us what that's going to look like. And I think that, um, with the new model and with Patty's training, that it's going to benefit us. As, uh, Mr. Bliss had indicated, a lot of new personnel in the district. Um, in the high school, we have some, uh, folks who have shifted over positions. I, I would, uh, like to point out that Ellen Shagnon has, uh, been named the interim guidance director and Ellen and I have hit it off already. She is terrific, she is super student-centered, uh, great personality. I think she has brought great life to that guidance department. Um, I think that they are incredibly thrilled to have her. And I know that, um, each day, when we sit and we talk and we chat and we talk about students, it's clear that, uh, we're on the same page with one another. And I jokingly said to her, if something is a major or a minor mistake, that you know I'm going to blame you and you're going to blame me and that way we'll be in this together. Uh, but no, in all honesty, she's been terrific. We've also hired, um, a couple of new folks, um, a new math teacher, Mr. Gregory Coman, uh, who had been with us prior and is actually a Dover Sherborne alumnus. Uh, Timothy Lane has been hired as a part-time PE wellness teacher. Timothy also holds certification in health, physical education, and adaptive education as we continue to look at inclusive practices and opportunities to, uh, provide free and appropriate education. That skill set is going to be critical. And, um, finally, Jeff Ferris has been hired as a, uh, foreign language department chair. And I've had a chance to work with Jeff on two or three different occasions already. He comes to us from, uh, Westchester County in New York and also PBD Memorial High School, where he was not only a Spanish teacher, but he also has administrative experience and has actually supervised, um, other practitioners and was in charge of about twenty-five people. So he comes to us with a great deal of experience and skill set. We're very, very excited. And so Jeff, in addition to Jeff being the new foreign language department chair, Nick Routh, um, has taken over the Living Fine Technical Arts Department Chair from Judy Crenshaw, who, uh, retired recently. Uh, so Nick has been working incredibly hard, uh, each day for him as a learning experience, but, uh, I know that he's up for the challenge. In the areas of plant facilities, um, really kind of an exciting program and Mr. La, uh, Velasser is here actually, and he was part of the reason of this being spearheaded. We've been working with the Environmental Protection Agency in formulating a disposal process. It's a free, it's part of a grant, I believe, and it's a, a free program through the federal government that enables us to dispose of chemicals in a safe, uh, productive manner. But it also allows us to create a safety manual and a process by which we will be disposing of outdated and, uh, used chemicals in the future, both for, uh, the high school and the middle school. So it's a collaborative, um, effort there. And they'll be developing a safety protocol, annual, and this is something that is completely free and sponsored by the federal government, which was great. Tons and tons of summer projects throughout the building, um, thanks to Dean and his staff. They did a fantastic job getting the, the buildings ready. And then even this past weekend, when we had so much rain, uh, the guys were there again this weekend. Thanks to Mr. Kellet, who was, uh, able to discover it, um, we were able to have a pretty normal school day. You know, other than a little bit of water, uh, upon the entrances, uh, the buildings were in great shape. And once again, the entire team has worked so incredibly hard. They're a really collaborative group, uh, who really want to serve students. Just a point of notification, our first school council meeting will be September ninth. And at that point, I want to talk a little bit about the, um, girls' ice hockey, uh, update. In your packet, there was a memo from Mr. Rollins. Mr. Rollins is here tonight and, uh, if you wanted to discuss sort of a little bit of the background of our girls' ice hockey?
Before we get started, I need to use myself.
Excellent. If I can put you up just for a few, Heath, and if we can finish up anything else.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, sure.
Because it is likely to be a fairly sensitive...
Sure, 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 yeah, sure.
So can I just ask what we were doing with the chemicals before we had a free... They were stored?
So essentially, they were in storage and we've accumulated, like, some of the reagent bottles were from the sixties and seventies. So, yeah, we, we had just slowly, just slowly over time, you know, the curriculum changes. And so slowly, as the curriculum changes, you know, reagents aren't necessarily used. Um, so some of them just kind of sat there on the shelf. And they, they would be extremely expensive to call up Clean Harbors and have them dispose of them. So through this program, it worked out great, where the EPA just happily took them off our hands. We didn't have to worry about it. And they're coming back to do training in the fall as well, as Mr. Smith mentioned.
Thank you, that's great. Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, both Chris and Anita Lotti were there to, to seek that opportunity out for the district, which was great.
And did Mr. Smith really need to mention that he had, uh, just a little bit of water outside of the buildings? Playing with your buddy here, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of a bit evil.
So it was good at the high school, excuse us, I can't hear you. Yeah?
It was, we had, we had a little bit of water, but not nearly, I guess, as much as Mr. Kellet, so...
We just had more fun.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
I'll then move forward to the nutrition school lunch piece. We had a, uh, excellent meeting with, uh, Chris Hay, uh, Steve Bliss, myself, Janelle, uh, food service director, and, um, Scott and Brian. And we discussed any various initiatives that the food service department will be rolling out this year. And one of the nice things that came out of that conversation was the need for a student intern who could help us with some marketing ideas, some of the labeling that would take place, um, some of the, uh, surveys as well. And so I proposed this to the guidance department, guidance was thrilled. They actually had a number of students in mind and are meeting this week to, uh, discuss which students perhaps they want to bring forward. Talked to Janelle today at lunch and, um, she would love to interview them and meet with them and, and find a candidate that would be a, a good fit. I think that it would be, uh, a tremendous opportunity for the student body to have a strong say in food service. It would also provide that student, uh, excellent experience, marketing lines, marketing to their peers. Um, and there's nobody that can have a stronger voice than students listening to students. Uh, so we're very, very excited about that as well, uh, looking at ways in which we can obviously follow federal guidelines, but also have creative and innovative ideas for lunch and for food service, as well as à la carte items.
For long-term, might there be a link between the foods class and, and Janelle's organization? Only because your intern eventually will graduate, so...
Sure.
Maybe to systematize it and institutionalize it, maybe there's, with the new foods person?
Yeah.
Maybe there's an opportunity.
Oh, I absolutely...
I'm not going to get into curriculum, that's your, your best job, but I just...
No, it is an excellent idea and I, and I know that Ms. McGovern, um, you know, is very interested. Obviously, as somebody who also teaches health, uh, in our building, so it's a perfect connection between healthy choices, uh, creative and really meals that students are going to be interested in, uh, but also needing federal guidelines. That's what's striking that balance. So, lots and lots of things going on at the high school. Sports are well underway, regular season for many of those sports open up tomorrow. Thank you Dana for sending that last out. And Heath and, Heath and his staff and Susan have been working furiously, making sure that things are ready, fields are ready, practice times are set up, away games, buses, everything, uh, to get the season underway. And it's really an exciting time when students finally get that opportunity to finally have some inter-scholastic competitions after they've been practicing for so many days, to have that chance. So, a great start, I'm thrilled and honored to be here, it's been a real privilege. And, um, I'm looking forward to a great year.
The, um, every, every bit of feedback, uh, Mr. Smith, and I absolutely want to share this publicly. I have a weekly meeting with the D S E A president, we met this afternoon and he shared that everyone is just related with your being, uh, from, from students, parents, the level of communication, the professional discourse with your faculty. The sense is that you're, you listen, you consider different vantage points, you're measured, you're professional, and it's just, uh, it's been phenomenal. I've heard that in an unsolicited fashion from, from all kinds of stakeholders. So, we love you and we're so happy to be here.
Thank you, my pleasure.
I have a question. Um, I have a question. By the way, I heard an excellent report of you today from my child. The kids too. You're connecting with the kids.
Thank you.
I have a, a request actually. The, uh, on the standardized testing stuff, um, I don't even know what those, who those six names are. I probably already know. But I noticed that you did AP and you did ACT.
Yeah.
And that you did not do SAT. I'm assuming that's because the college board isn't providing with you with the same kind of information, but I don't know that. But I was going to ask if you could, when you do the MCAS.
Yeah, absolutely. And that is something that Ellen and I will be putting together, Ellen Shagnon, the interim director of guidance. Uh, we have some of the preliminary data, but we wanted an opportunity to look at, uh, more of the longitudinal...
Because so many more of our kids are taking the SAT and the ACT.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It seems to me that it's probably more important information.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you're right, we, we do have those, those baseline numbers, but Ellen and I want an opportunity to sort of digest them. Well, that's what we want to investigate more than just one year, we want to look at multiple years.
Okay, uh, so we do have a few more things that, that are already dead here. We'll turn to those next. Is there anything else there before we get to any of the other things? Uh, the Boston Magazine, making, I'm actually going to note it, fantastic, great. If you don't know it, we'll talk about it in a minute, because I, I have an item down below, excellence metrics. Um, we'll get to that. Uh, then we have a donation acceptance and some information, concussion data and then discussion of, uh, girls' ice hockey. So, a donation acceptance, we have a, a request to accept a donation from boosters for, uh, a flag, deputy flags for the athletic field. Is there anything either of you want to say about it? It's very generous and I look forward to a quick test.
Yeah, it was really part of the building project when we were out there that didn't get finished in time, because we were really focusing on like getting a label and, uh, and it's a traditional on the, uh, on the light bulbs, so it's a nice touch.
May I make a motion?
Please.
That we accept the donation of boosters for eight banners of four thousand nine hundred dollars?
Is there?
Second?
Any discussion?
Thank you, boosters.
Thank you, boosters. Oh, is it okay? All right, that's great. Thank you very much. The concussion, data we had asked for, and now we have it, it's in the pack, I don't know whether, do you want to say anything about it, Pete? Is there anything?
Sure, I think it's, I think our third year that we've reported the data to the state every year, and we report this year, spells out how many concussions we receive, I think it's interesting, and the number that are outside of the athletic, that come into the athletics world because our students are on teams, they fall under that number. Some very unique ones, sneezes that have caused concussions, car accidents and the like. So we're treating a lot, I think, I think there's this opinion out there, like, oh my gosh, 16 concussions, and everybody's getting them now, but really, it's the, the reporting is the important part that I'm excited about, to see that students are willing to come forward and report. We're, we're, we started to look into concussions and learning severity, it was a big reluctance to let coaches and the trainer know that something happened and to play through it, so the, we're at a point now where the education is caught up, and it's in the forefront, where students are speaking up for themselves, and that's a good situation.
So the report says 22 concussions, 16 of them related to a sports injury, and I'm curious about the other 16. These were on school property, which is why they're?
No, no. They could be from anywhere, but they fall into athletics because they could be on a team. Club sports injuries, there was a few of them, there was a slip and fall on the floor, there was different things that, that fall under us because they are current athletes, so we have to, to treat them and clear them to return, and it also affects them in the classroom, so some of them, you know, couldn't take a full class load for a week, might have affected their testing schedule, accommodations needed.
So it's possible, presumably, that somebody who's not an athlete might have gotten a concussion that wouldn't?
Yes, yes.
Questions about these numbers?
Do we know what the state does with the data?
What's that?
Do we know what the state does with the data?
They publish it in a report, yeah, which, which varies.
Did you see the article in the Globe this summer, when they reported it?
Yeah.
So basically, it becomes a, a chance for the Globe to pick up and comment on whatever way, and I think Needham, who had the dubious honor of being at the top of that list, responded very well in the article, which is basically to say that kids are reporting, which is good, we have a procedure in place to manage it, which is good, and we monitor it closely, which is good. So it's, I think they were trying to make it seem like it's a bad thing, they were, I think in the end, it showed that schools like us and like Needham are on top of the issue, which is the most important.
Low numbers, when I see in the report, a large school, a large program with low numbers, it kind of throws up flags in my, in my, in my.
And these, and the 16, these are spread across the contact fields?
Yes, not even, not even.
Not in contact.
No, just any.
Yeah, there really is not an over, yeah, we do break down that data, we nip it for ourselves, and there is not an overwhelming from what's with football, tends to have more traditionally, but not necessarily.
I think it also reflects an increased education from our coaching staff as well. I think back 20 years ago, coaches were reluctant to take a claim that perhaps this was a concussion, partly because they themselves didn't know, they hadn't done any research, it wasn't really part of the coaching curriculum, but that certainly, right now, is safety and the well-being of that student, where our coaches are not going to take any chances with that.
Thank you. That brings us to a data of girls' ice hockey. This Graham, do you want to?
I just need to say before we get started, my daughter is going to be a captain of girls' hockey next year, so even though it's a passion of mine, I feel that I should participate when you get to a point where there's a vote, if there is that.
If we vote, thank you very much. Mr. Rollins?
Well, we're in a unique position with girls' ice hockey, where we've been, I've been very proud of small schools, but we've put forward, our girls' ice hockey team, the sport has grown along the state. We are in a situation where, memory number, there's 16 on the team, six graduated, we had five students participate on the team last year that are not participating, and this year ends up three transfers, one is focusing on another sport, and the other is not going to play. It leaves us in a tough situation. We kind of had a heads up to this at the end of last season, we were aware that there was a possibility, we looked into options for the team, and this, this great thing we've had at the school, so we did speak to several schools, and in total, we've spoke to six schools about maybe forming a partnership so that we can continue the program. Fast forward, we've kind of whittled away, got down to, to one that was, is a good fit, that we're focusing on now. It's been an ongoing dialogue, I think Mr. Smith, Mr. Bliss, and myself, it's been a constant communication for, for months, really, that we've been going in this. Our goal is to give sustainable numbers for the program. We are 11 for next, this season, which is not a number that we could participate. We are looking to be, we need at least 15, is what we're saying, we can have up to 24 suited up for a game. So we were looking for help from other schools, we found one that is in the process of going through evaluating their, I think it's really coming down to a financial decision for them.
So the, Mr. Smith, Mr. Rollins have been great partners with this. We've been working this situation the entire summer, because we have a number of student athletes who are interested in continuing the team this, this coming season, and an interesting number of 11, you know, players-ish, something that Ball Park and the Athletic Director communicated to us, that's, while it's a diminishing number, it's still a number of student athletes, and number one. And number two, though, the number of 11 is, is too few to safely put on the ice for a prolonged period of time. So we're at an odd position with this team, in that it's not as if we have two or three players, and we're really trying to just throw every kind of life preserver known to mankind, it's more, we're on the cusp. You know, what the future holds longitudinally for this team, as well as others, is, is in the, is in the tea leaf, so to speak, but we did, you know, Mr. Rollins reached out to a couple of districts, and they since have turned around and said, no, you know, whatever the number is, what the issue is. There is one district who has asked, and I've been in touch with the superintendent every two or three days, and we've been monitoring the situation, she has asked to be able to do some more vetting on her end before moving forward with that, but the idea there is that she believes she has six or seven players who would like to play at least this season, and not to really have it be necessarily formal co-op, but to rather have it be a situation where potentially, through their boosters, they have, their position is that they may actually fund those seven players and essentially, give them into the DS platform, the DS arena, literally, for this season only, as a non, not long-term kind of arrangement, just there and definitely at a different phase of their program, as are we, in terms of looking at enrollment, it's moving through, what are we doing about different teams. So she has a meeting and will know definitively on September 13th, so we want to, we do just bring this forward, to see what the rule of the regional school committee was, with respect to this.
I have a question, and I have no vested interest in this at all, except, but my question is, have we considered, in terms of the sustainability of the team, have we considered possibly for this year, moving middle school kids onto the team? Would that do the MIAA? I know we share a campus.
There is a, a platform for that, and the school committee decision a few years back was to never do that because of issues.
Well, might we want to reconsider that?
But just what we consider does not give us the numbers that we need to sustain.
But might, might it be a good thing to reconsider in terms of the success of the program with smaller number, I mean, we're going to have a diminishing school popular, I'm just throwing out, in terms of the sustainability of the program and the development of players, so that the team could continue when our ball ends, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, there is a platform for that.
Right, the, the other complexity with that is the MIAA, which is the governing board by which we operate under, would also then have to approve, and they're very reluctant to approve, bringing middle school students into high school programs, especially when, even though we share a campus, we actually have, we have two separate headmasters, two separate administrations, and certainly, it's certainly something to look at, but the MIAA has.
It doesn't violate any law, any of the MIAA laws, right?
Well, we couldn't do it, we couldn't do it without their approval. Right now, they would not approve it.
No, I'm, I'm, I was just throwing it out, I know that if we were in, on two separate campuses, it would violate, but because we're on, we're in the middle ground, kind of.
No, because we're two in that.
Still, two, two headmasters. And you could argue that they're under the same roof, the students are under the same roof, but with the two separate headmasters, that's one of the, one of the.
Well, they literally are under the same roof.
There's enough, there's enough to look at, this.
Yeah, that might be a future consideration, but if this does not accomplish our goals.
What's our, what's our timeline? When do we need to have a decision?
Very soon, so, yeah, within the, by the end of the month, it has to be to the state in voting. There's a voting, so both school committees have to agree, the chair of the school committees, and now the superintendent, and the superintendents, principals, athletic directors from both schools, you have to create a process to share. So in this situation, they have to share their attendance data with our coach, how to get all the information. Our school would be considered the host school, and they are joining ours, which is a good thing for our long-term viability, it's our coach, our practices, and they are playing on our team. After that's done, our league that we play in, which is the Southeast Massachusetts Girls' Hockey League, the member schools get a vote, to see if we're creating a competitive imbalance, and then it goes to the state. So we have some steps to.
And why do we have to approve it?
The school committee, they're joining up two programs, we need the school committee to approve.
So.
And it's creating one for them.
Yeah, because, to me, when you said it's tuition and not a co-op, that's where I was, that's why I was asking, do we really?
Yeah, we have, we have to file the state paperwork.
Are we sure we have to go through all of those steps, though, Pete, just for the tuition arrangement? I mean, I know that's very, a very nice explanation, but authentic co-op, but that's not where, essentially, the town where, the district that we're in discussion with would literally, boosters pay us.
Yes, that's why we'd be the host school, and they're paying to join our team.
We have to go through all of those steps?
We have to go through those steps.
Then what's the incentive to not just go in a co-op route and not just, I mean, we thought it'd be a cleaner transaction if we were to go in a tuition route.
It needs to be voted on, yeah, if, beyond your school, it needs to get through those processes.
I'm sorry, I want to clarify my question. So, in, in order to, to accomplish all those things in time to play in the season, when does this body need to make a decision, if this place is going to make a decision?
Well, it depends on when you're comfortable in.
Can we do it in October, or do we have to do it tonight?
I would say before that.
So tonight?
Yeah, so if there was a possibility for tonight, to know that if it was agreed upon by the other school, that we fill out the paperwork.
So a contingent approval?
Yeah, because we don't really know, and I will give more specificity around it, so we have 11 student athletes, it would be an unsafe situation to probably run the team, so an option is to say, we just don't have sufficient subscription to run the batters in the run, plus the, right, as unfortunate as that may be. Heath knows well that one of the things that he'll need to take up with Athletic Advisory this year is really beginning to look at, what do we do when we're faced in years to come with teams that may need to come offline, as our enrollment does decline? I mean, we will get to that point, right, over time. The superintendent with whom I'm in discussion has said that her boosters would be willing to pay $1,000 of tuition per athlete, so that would be up to $7,000. That's a considerable chunk of money towards the operation, which we otherwise would not recruit. So it's essentially giving a number of female student athletes an opportunity to play for a season from two member districts with an offset to our operating budget in athletics.
Is, is there a downside, or what is the downside, or any risk concern, things that we should worry about?
No, I think that the school's in a situation where they are eager to get it going because they have a population that can grow forward, I think it's a very matched school as far as importance on athletics and academics, and maintain that balance. It is a situation that we can, we can look at, we can make it through this year, and we can look at long-term. And another thing is, in the world of girls' ice hockey, these arrangements are not uncommon, especially when it's an emerging sport.
We advise us another year to.
Yes, and, and Ellen, I think in the world of girls' ice hockey now, it's, as the sport's growing, you're growing popularity, and those youth programs can join in and develop that pool to move up, where a lot of the towns are in that situation. So that's why we've been so lucky to be able to.
We've done this before with gymnastics, swimming, so I don't see that there's any negative, I think it's a great way to, as Dana said, buy a year, and hopefully, we'll be able to strong the team out of it, or make it more formal co-op, if that's the easier way to go.
Michael, could we, at least at some point during the year, do the research on, are there programs ongoing in the community in the younger grades, whether it's fifth, seventh, or whatever, that shows? Is it growing, or is it stagnant, or is it declining?
So, Michael, I am Director of Girls Hockey at Nata Comets, that's where a lot of the Dover Sherwin goes to play. We have 85 to 90 kids. We had to make cuts this year for first time at U-12, I had to find places for the kids to play in Melissa. They're not all Sherwin kids, but, you know, they're girls from Wayland, Western, Nata, Dover Sherwin, wherever.
These are what?
Anywhere from U-10 to U-18. There's two U-18 teams that support Nata, Western, Wayland, Dover Sherwin girls that then come on to play.
I mean, from what I've heard, there are girls out there.
No, I'm just curious.
It's more about what are we doing within our own system.
The downside is, it's a very expensive sport, and we're, we're providing a very expensive service for fewer and fewer and fewer of our kids. This, it's going to be $7,000, I don't know what that does to the final numbers, I'm afraid I'm, I'm not able to make decisions on this, because I don't see numbers in front of me, but I don't know what the, what the bottom line is for this sport, with those numbers applied. I do, I do know that in, in years past, where we've had substantial numbers, we'd still be talking about something on the order of, before we get to athletic fees, something on the order of $900, $1,000, $1,000 a kid, and that's with a fully, so if we cut that down, it's, and still have the same set of expenses.
But I, I guess the counter that I would say to that is that we committed to this team last year under the, under the budget that we currently are operating under, and we knew what the expenses were going to be, and we're actually going to get potentially an offset of $6,000, $7,000 against that, to a team that we'd already made a commitment to as part of this academic year. I, I think, given that we can't go back in time and look at a declining enrollment, and whether a team should be added or dropped is something we, we should look at this year, I think that continuing the commitment that we are operating under for this fiscal year makes sense, and then going through the process of looking at what, what needs to be done a year from now, what data we need, do we really co-op, is it worth it? But I think you're asking for financial granularity that we don't do in general, which is a whole different conversation that we should maybe talk about in the future, but I don't think it should impact girls' ice hockey today.
So it's persuasive, and I'm not sure that I don't disagree, I'm not sure that I disagree with you. I would say two things. One is that the, the decision that we made was predicated more or less on that program continuing more or less the way that it was continuing. It's not doing that, clearly, it's, it's now in a very different position. The school committee can decide to pay attention to that, or can decide to not pay attention to that, but it is different, and that, and that provides a, you know, stepping up point for, for opening that discussion, but there was a second point. So, there you go. Anything else? Yeah.
Well, one other thing that occurs to me is, I mean, we want to have even opportunities for girls and boys to play sports, and we have a boys' team, and there are laws about that. I just, you know, there seems to me that.
Yeah, I think, I think I brought in saying the law doesn't require you to offer.
Parallel teams, but, but it does require parallel.
Parallel teams, but, but it does require parallel opportunities, I believe, and so, you know, I just-
There is no shortage of athletic opportunities for girls within our system. I mean, let's, let's not muddy the discussion.
All right, so, so we really do need to put a motion on the table. Is there any reason why we're not hearing what town it is? It's all really-
The superintendent contacted me the other day and said she would just like the benefit, because this is totally new news.
So we're narrowing it down to a she? So, I mean, I'm comfortable putting a motion. A motion on the table.
Before, before we do, I'd be happy to have a motion, but before we do, I, I do want to make sure I understand, because it's an important question, why is it that we are having this discussion? That was my second point. Because I'm still a little confused. Who, we're going to vote to do what?
Accept money.
Accept money?
Accept money and the hosting of athletes from another school district on our school team with the required processes that go in place around accountability and attendance, and everything that goes with being an athlete on a Dover Sherburne-sponsored team. So I think that's why, for one season.
And is there any liability implications?
Yeah, that's my first question after we have a motion.
Since this is, okay.
And again, we haven't not done this, so we have history.
But hockey just-
The liability actually falls within the, where the students go to school.
It is, you mean, it's something-
Their insurance.
Before you say I move, what, what do you think your motion should say? Just so that we don't have to-
Uh, what Dana said.
Do you want me to make the motion? I'll make the motion.
I just want to make sure that we have a motion that we're going to want to vote and agree upon, that a motion that we're going to have to amend after some-
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong on the one. I move that Dover Sherburne, I guess, that we, um, allow for school year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the acceptance of athletes from the school to be named later, under a-
Which shall not be named.
You shouldn't have to name it.
Let's, let's try the school.
Your school.
A finite number of students to pay a, an agreed-upon tuition rate to participate in the girls' ice hockey program. That was way too long.
How are girls?
Sounds good.
Amy agrees.
I'm trying to, to write a-
It was dramatic and horrendous, too, I think.
Motion to allow the acceptance of athletes from outside the district on to, to participate on the girls' ice hockey team at a tuition-
For the school year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, pending approval by that school district.
Okay.
Why not, but?
Hey, do we miss anything here?
No, I think that's going to cover it.
Then we have a second?
Oh, second! So much easier.
Throw me the other, let me do the discussion.
How firm is that thousand-dollar kid, probably?
Quite.
Quite.
And why don't we drop that thousand dollars and get into the motion?
No, because if it's a thousand and one, we'd have to amend the motion.
Right.
Um-
At least.
Any other discussion? Uh, all is in favor? All is opposed? Wait for them. Opposed, abstaining, one.
Two abstained.
Two abstained, one abstained.
Well, Claire recused, right? Is that different than abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Anything else on the high school report? I think that covers it. Uh, returning to Mr. Kellitt, Mr. Kellitt, welcome back. And not only do you have air conditioning, but you're understanding of a swimming pool.
Oh, we always bring a swimming pool. Kathy, we have a swimming pool.
Mr. Kellitt.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is a pleasure to return. Um, it, it's actually kind of nice to go after Mr. Smith because he essentially hit on all the same things that we worked on this summer at the middle school, from UBD to, um, the new evaluation system. This afternoon, we had baseline edge training, which will be the electronic, um, program that we will use for the new evaluation system, and Dr. Ladoo presented both staffs this afternoon, and our staff all signed in afterwards, so we're ready to go. Um, the highlight of our school opening, which was very new, was our student-led assembly on the morning of the first day, and a follow-up assembly on Friday afternoon, where rather than listen to myself or the teachers talk about rules and different things and expectations here, the students, um, very, in an outstanding way, brought us to the new school year and presented the expectation that we as a staff have, and they as students have. So we're very appreciative to them. There's a list of those students that participated, and the three teachers, Laura Holland, Angelo Macchiano, and Aaron Newman, who helped organize it, going back to last June. Um, we, I don't know if you're aware, but we had a, a little bit of work done this summer in the middle school. It's ongoing. The air conditioning project and ATC, the, the general contractor for it was just, they were phenomenal. Uh, you know, Ralph, Ralph Kelly and Chris oversaw the process. They were nice enough to include me in their weekly meetings, which was, from my standpoint, educational.
You didn't go on the roof with me, though.
No, and I don't think I will. I'll stick to the water, and not up there. I'm not, heights are not my friend. Um, but the, that, that group worked hand-in-hand with Dave Bonavir, our head custodian, and his staff, and you would not know that such a project happened with the condition they had, the building, and they were just fantastic. And that continued into yesterday, when I arrived, and, mm, it wasn't that I, you know, I, I was coming to clean out my email, because I had a bunch of email, but that was more because my wife wanted to get rid of me. She wants to sleep, and I get up early. So I came in, and within ten minutes, Dave Bonavir was here, and Ralph Kelly was, uh, here shortly thereafter, and three of his guys, Dave's guys, came in because we had a mess from the front hallway here through Monique's office into the science hallway and one of the rooms, and that continued this morning. But they were here, they, they were diligent in cleaning it, and we're greatly appreciative of that, and, and they did that all summer. Uh, we did, we do have a number of new staff members. Uh, we have a, uh, in addition to Ellen, the result of Ellen going, becoming our interim guidance director, we have two new guidance counselors here, Kelsey Ferrante, who comes to us from, she had experience down in North Carolina, and then she was, uh, in Lexington last year as a, a long-term sub. Uh, we also have Joelle Shufen, Shufen, who's returning. She was an aide here, and she was a guidance counselor at Charter School, which was in Foxborough. In addition to them, Sue Mosier has returned as their guidance secretary full-time. We have two new aides, Man, Anne, Mary Ann Mackin and Dana Coleman, um, with special ed. Anita Sebastian has replaced Kristen Peterson, she was here last year, for Amanda Rogers, who has returned from maternity leave. And Randy Huber has returned after a two-year stint in China, so we're very fortunate to have him back. Um, other than that, I, I go back to, we have, uh, we're ready to go with the evaluation sys- system, it's new. Um, but it, it's going to be exciting. It's, it's going to be a learning experience for administrators and the teachers, that they understand that we're working together, and it's, the students are going to be able to, at least, um, think. I believe that is all, unless you have other questions.
I do actually have a question, that's about this picture, can you tell me something about it?
That is an old piece of work that, um, Kathy Semenow had down in her room. I believe it was from an after-school art, art group that put that together, and as we went forward, we, I've talked with the high school art teachers, uh, they're going to have additional work that we can display. And it wouldn't necessarily have to be just art, it could be from other departments as well. But it is a nice way to, to get our product out.
Well done.
When I watched this meeting at home, which I often do, I always find, that I'm looking behind me and saying, that's an awfully blank board after, I thought it was nice to have something.
Good idea.
Our, our plan is to use the boards out there and get various boards, alternate, or have one board from one school, each from each school.
Do, yeah.
Fun.
That's right. Uh, thank you very much. Any questions, please, just a moment?
Quick one, the, the change in social studies, did we lose Mr. Perkins in that process?
Yes.
Sadly.
Unfortunately.
But he went somewhere really fun.
He has returned, um, that, yeah, he's back in this area, so.
Oh, I thought he was heading somewhere fun.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we move on to special items of new business, beginning with committee assignments.
Sure, thank you.
And I would also like to just thank Mr. Kellitt for the phone call yesterday morning, while we need to be-
Yes.
I thought we were just in a beach-themed return party, blah, blah, send, create a beach.
Is there a lot of sand?
It looked like a beach, and there was one to restaurants.
The things we'll do, you know, to answer emails. On the, on the committee roster, um, these are actually what we really consider superintendent committees, the wellness committee and the revenue generation committee. The revenue generation committee came about from the Sherborne School Committee, and the idea was, is to bring together some folks, some interested stakeholders, who would like to talk about ways of potentially bringing money into, um, school districts and the school system. And it was actually Mr. Hook, Frank Hook, who is the secretary of the Sherborne School Committee. It was Frank's idea, so it began at the Sherborne School Committee, the Dover School Committee with Adrian Hill, uh, then he jumped onto that committee as well, but, you know, rather than having so much of the budget discussion revolve around not just necessarily trying to control expenses, the idea of, are there any ways for us to creatively look to bring some revenue into any of the three school districts? So if there's anyone on the regional school committee who would like to be a part of that, certainly, uh, let me know. It's a committee that really is run and organized through my office, so it's not a technical subcommittee of the regional school committee. Uh, neither is the, the wellness committee, but the wellness committee is that larger umbrella under which, you know, they'll have spanning representatives on that group, will have, um, dining services will be represented there, and that was supposed to be more of the hedge-all, uh, so we didn't have a separate SNAP group, and a separate group for this, that, and the other thing, uh, to bring everything under one umbrella.
So it's more like a liaison role.
It is, it's more of a liaison role, so if you want to think about it and let me know.
Someone I had already said I was going to do the wellness thing.
Had you said that?
I, I thought Lauren's name came to mind when I was looking through, so I think she said it, too. Anyway, are you up for it?
Yeah.
There we go.
Well, it's good.
Yeah, okay. Anyone on the revenue generation committee? Anyone, anyone? If they got it, let me know.
Revenue generation, okay.
Revenue generating.
I think you're being solicited.
I'm doing the capital-
Oh, I was, no, I was just putting it there.
Well, you didn't have to.
I know, I know.
Michael, Michael, didn't you, I thought you had taken the school council, middle school school council, I thought, last year. I think you had said that you would do that one, um, at one of our meetings.
I said you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because I was going to say, if you needed someone for span, that was one of the ones that I was interested in.
So Dana, will we move you to span?
Yes, please.
Okay, Michael Lee?
So what, with this middle school?
School council? Uh, you can talk to Mr. Kellitt.
Hold on, if you want a model person.
No, I just want to know what-
When you mean, do we want to do-
Yeah, I get contacted for meetings.
It's October eighth.
Yeah.
I'll have to put my name down.
You don't mind being as a foreign language?
I don't have to.
It's total.
Great, great.
World language display.
I know. We, we had this discussion.
I thought we were going to sort of, I thought we were going to leave that at the elementary level.
That's what I thought, too.
Because like, there's, there's really a problem this year at least, to just roll out the last program.
Yeah, you don't have to ask at a meeting if it's unimaged.
We'll, we'll get back to the question of foreign languages.
Yeah, I thought it was your issue, the other issue. So do we need someone for DSEF?
No.
No.
I think we decided that we'd have Amy and Steve.
Yeah, I think that was-
It's never worked.
If there's somebody, we have a DSEF board meeting next Monday night, so if there's a, they'll probably talk about the lead access committees. If we need someone, I'll-
All right, anything else? The next item on the agenda I, I put on there, excellence metrics, we struggled for a little bit, I'm not actually calling, but this gets back to my question of how does, how does one, um, assess how you're doing? Uh, how do you assess what your, what your system is doing, whether it's doing what you want it to? We have extraordinary results, which are published in the Boston Magazine, yet again, with now Dover number one and Sherburne number two. How can this be? Why isn't it the only-
Because they spend more money. That's the only reason, they spend more money according to their-
And Dover is alphabetically just for sure.
And, and one should never, uh, look down one's nose at praise, and that's certainly not a high praise. But, on the other hand, I-
Good night, Chris.
Uh, I think most of us would agree that there are, there are better richer ways to judge a school system than the methods used there. So I, I, you may remember, I brought this up at the, at the July meeting, and then being the chair, I decided it was going to be on the agenda for tonight, very briefly. Um, what I suggest is, uh, we'll follow the framework, and it'll be interesting if we're on it, and then, um, how we're going to. And the framework is, what are the other things that are with, uh, measuring, uh, tabulating, keeping track of? Uh, in order to be able to come up with a, a year-by-year tracking of how we do, what are, what do we think in fact? Where do we lie on that, that spectrum of being somewhere between pretty good, really good? Uh, I, I think it's probably doing, I don't really know what, what one should do, I have some, some vague ideas. And what I'd like to do is suggest that those of you who are interested, to not do this at school committee meetings, but those of you who are interested, are interested, uh, to sit around and jog down the office of coffee about what those things might be, and what, what we should include, what we shouldn't include, uh, and then see if there's a practical way to go forward. Um, as part of that, it's very important to recognize we may not, we're forbidden from putting the work on Mr. Bliss's plate to make this happen, and that's fine, and I think that's really important, and, and I think it's doable even still, and I think the same goes with, with our administrators at the buildings, we're not going to hand them a, you know, please tabulate the number of kids who walk backwards down the hallway, not so measured, actually. Uh, but I think that, I think there are some things that we do measure, and then fair, some fairly simple things that maybe we don't measure, we can measure, uh, that might, might contribute, might give us a fuller picture of how well we do, what we think we do. What I propose, if that sounds okay, is that we, um, meet a couple times over the next couple of months to talk about that, formulate some vague plan, bring it back to this group, and I would say, as a, a way to get some more input, give a little more talk at this, at that point, and then see if there's, see if there's any further thoughts.
Well, then, I would also have that you, we have to have the academic excellence report that we had last seen, re-put in the packet to kind of, that might be an interesting place to start generating ideas around this topic, because so much great work has been done.
That committee is, as we said, drawn in hiatus, um, and I think that provides us an opportunity to, to take their work, and also to, to shape it into something that may be far more narrow in terms of their, uh, and something that, that we may actually need to, you know.
Well, I have great interest in this, and I remember you saying, I think, a while back, um, when I said something about test scores, that, that the tail was wagging the dog on that. I believe those were your exact words. Um, and, but the wise, the wise thing that I thought you said at the time was that we have to decide, before we measure anything, we have to decide what it is to be excellent, and I think that that's something- And I think that that's something that really needs to happen. So I'm here, here, let's do it.
So, uh, so if, if it's all right, I, I don't really want to make this a subcommittee of the school committee. I really just want to make a discussion, I guess. I think we can do that.
If you have more than three, unless you have to post it though.
Uh, that's true. Yeah, actually, that's right. Cause it's a, it's a forum regardless of what we, what we say. So coffee, uh, and, and jogging at the Sherborne Sales Company or something like that, uh, just to get us started. And just let me know if you want to be part of that. And if it is, well, then we'll make it, we'll make it a whole school committee. And that's fine with one item, would you?
So anything that we do at, at some point will our affiliated school committees and districts need to be brought into?
Not need to be. I would say, you know, for my own narrow-minded purposes, I would say I don't want to do that because that increases the number, excuse me, increases the number of verivids, uh, and I think decreases the focus. I'd rather keep the focus of regional committees. And if we, you know, if we solve the, the problem and we figure out a way to franchise it.
It also would be much easier to measure things internally without asking for help from the administration.
Get a lot more measuring done at this level. All right, great. So let me know and we'll, and we'll work from there. That is excellence metrics. Uh, agenda items. Oh, are there any new pieces of business before we go over to agenda items for October?
I have one that I've been asked to, um, just raise for later discussion because it needs bigger. And that is, um, from SPAN about, potentially, um, looking at this student handbook around. Right, around chemical health. So the question which has been alluded to, kind of discussed in the past is, right now, the chemical health policy has, uh, implications on athletes if there's a violation of the policy, but only athletes based on MIA rules. And the question on the, that SPAN and not just SPAN, but other people have raised is, is that fair? And should the whole community be held at a similar standard? So there's a, a lot of discussion that needs to happen before anything is definitive, but obviously since it's part of the student handbook, it would come to us at some point. And obviously it needs to be bought into by the administration. And, and while I don't think it's priority one for tomorrow, but I think it's something that, um, we have been asked by SPAN to at least have on our radar screen for this year as opposed to waiting for all of the, the academic year to raise it. Is that accurate, what you said, Steve?
Very accurate. That's come up and on my John Smith, but John Smith hasn't seen the list with the John Smith. We'll get to it. But it is, I, it's very seriously one of the top items is to look at the chemical. We've heard that now for a few years. And I think the first thing we want to do is take a look at the, we'll take a look at the policy manual, which is the, the body of this body. Um, and make sure they're untouchable or identify what the touch points are. And then we'll take it administratively and see what.
So, so I hear what you're saying. And I, I'm, I know that athletes would be suspended from certain number of cracks in games, that sort of thing. So if someone is not an athlete.
That's what needs to be discussed.
What would happen?
That's exactly what needs to be discussed.
If something were to happen.
Yeah, but say they're not in drama.
Right, but Shelley, if you and I, if I, if you're the captain of a team and I'm the lead of a show, if something happens off school ground.
No, no, I agree. I agree. So some drama, clubs.
It's harder to quantify. It's harder to, and that's why clearly there needs to.
For those of, those of you not versed in this policy, I think what you're talking about is the, the, the MIAA policy, which is incorporated to the policy manual.
Right.
Says that an athlete who is, who, you know, abuses illegal drugs.
Who's caught.
Off school property, out of school time.
Right.
But is, but is found out to be doing so suffers the same punishments regarding their participation in athletics as if that had happened on school property. I believe that's the policy.
I'll defer to you.
Well, only because there isn't a policy about what happens on school property. If we were to have a policy.
I think they have a policy regardless of location.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
And on, on, on school property, there would be greater consequences actually because of.
There would be other consequences, but the consequences for the athlete in regards to the athletic program is independent of where the violation happens. That's my point. And what SPAN BS is asking about is whether that same level of scrutiny of behavior outside.
Accountability.
Accountability, thank you. Uh, outside school property ought to apply to a larger group of superficial athletes.
Yes.
Related to in-school.
Right.
And these line of several occasions in the past, literally had to levy consequences against a student athlete for the same offense, different, with different dispensation of the affair, than would be the case for a non-student athlete. And that is just many, many times that was just for us.
It's hard. There's a lot of.
So John and whoever will go away and speak with SPAN and administration.
How do we move this forward?
We'll take it under consideration administratively, but we also want to consult with the policy manual, touch base there, make sure we got it better governing.
Can I ask a question about this? Just, this is just a question. Do the kids who play a sport sign off on something? And the kids who don't not?
We signed up, we have to do MIAA rules, blah, blah, blah.
I, I think that's a distinction between that and something else.
There's a whole lot of things I don't actually know yet. So I, I don't, I think I'd be speaking out of turn if I, if I comment on any of.
But globally, there are other districts that have said, you know what, the chemical health rule as espoused by the MIAA will become the same, chemical health guidelines being placed for all students. So the MIAA sets the floor, you know, and supplies the student athletes. Other districts have said, we're gonna raise the bar on that.
So doesn't that, we're, we're gonna get a policy recommendation or update.
I just wanted to make sure it was part of our consciousness. That's all.
Maybe else needs to be discussed?
Just, at what point does the school's responsibility and, and parental and civic authority responsibility start? Now, MIAA is addicting something because they're the MIAA. It's not us really. Our policy, we don't have a choice or the students don't have a choice on that. I think that's an issue that should be, if this is brought forward, be given consideration.
I think it would be an extraordinary rich debate. Yeah, exactly. That's exactly. Anything else? Let's move on from there. Is anything else anybody wanted to bring up before we move on to our minutes? And so for agenda items for October, I have Park and Common Core as a, as an initial introduction to those things. Anything else needs to be on our October agenda?
Discuss SAT results this year.
MMK. Yes, it is. Oh, boy, it's just gonna be.
The subcommittee report you wanted, and I was gonna say, yeah, you gotta expect something from us.
Just an update.
We can update you.
Just an update.
We can update you.
We met and we talked.
Just an intro, intro, intro. Great. It's gonna be a short meeting. Is there anything else that we need to?
We always think that.
I know.
Just want to raise a key. Of course, I think you or somebody have raised it at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Which had to do with, um, co, uh, uh, at the high school, but I suppose it all came back to both requirements and whether we want to do it. Whether we want to continue to do what we've always done or whether we want to think about.
So, so.
We have a whole list from July. It's something you guys have an update back to us.
Yeah, so that's in fact where I was going. With this wonderful short meeting that we had in October, uh, there are some things that we had said, uh, would be excellent to, to talk about throughout the year. Um, graduation requirements is one. I'm gonna to defer on that one right now just because I don't want Mr., I do want Mr. Smith to come back to school tomorrow. Um, we did talk about, um, there's another one here, um, and I'm gonna defer on that one because I don't want Mr. Kellett to run away either. The, um, yeah, I'll think about it. Do, it, it, is the school committee ever interested in questioning of revisiting fees?
Yes.
No.
Only in the, only in the context of understanding what, what activities and what sports cost relatively. It's just with the same body of information that we have for all these other conversations, then, uh, but I think we need to start to understand.
I'd like to.
Where this budget's heading and, and what value we get from various.
I would like to suggest as we sort of edit the budget season that, that we have a brief discussion. In particular about that question of revenue generation, because as we saw in the, the fee report, we were not getting, there seems to be a fairly large amount of money that we had budgeted that we were getting in this to, to know whether we had poor expectations or poor compliance. That's the first thing.
Richard, my, my part of it, that, um, it, the initial know is, you know, as you know, we discuss it every time and, and, um, get ourselves to the point where we're not gonna raise fees or whatever. Um, but there is that aspect of what activities are being offered at the middle school and the high school. It, is it the right mix of activities, whatever? And I know we have two new headmasters, so not asking them now, but maybe six months from now to say, okay, you know, how would you change it? What will you be doing differently next year as we begin to budget those activity fees? Because I'm not sure, you know, m- maybe what's offered is of no interest. Is it low interest? Is it in the price?
It's going to be a long time.
Um, because enrollment is relatively steady.
Is this activities in sports or just activities?
I consider them.
This is.
No, oh, activities and sports, extracurricular. Okay, that's each one of the categories.
That activity or athletic fee has gone, you know, revenue has gone up, but the other one is dropping.
Yeah.
Um, is it, you know, more kids are just doing more sports, so there's less time available to them?
We may not like that.
I, you know, and I think you just need to.
Let's not have, let's not have a discussion now that we, that we may have in October. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think that, that, that is a, that is an important question. What are we offering?
Yeah.
But I also think that just because we have not, we've made certain decisions in the past not to alter the fee structure, doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the conversation now.
Fair. Um, I just asked Mr. Bliss, is this a discussion that you think we can?
I think the discussion's fine if there's going to be any long-sought ramp up for that. If they had a question, that would be helpful for October.
Yeah, no, I've been. We could put together a schedule. And, and population of those and maybe, I mean, is that something that we can do?
Richard, are you looking for? Well, we had, when we first met on the subcommittee about the fees, were that.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Wait, no, I think I just heard somebody say, middle school activities, for instance, what's the range of operators? Is it the right range? How is that gonna change over time? Is the population changes? Did I make this call up?
No.
That's what you were saying. And I just, I'm just wondering whether that's data we can have in hand without putting anybody to, to any effort.
Well, I, I'm not even sure that's our data to micromanage. It's more, you know, what is the administration thinking about? How are we gonna manage this lineup?
Then, then we probably just want to give them, uh, a charge to, to think about that question.
We could take a question. I mean, administratively, we can take a look at that at some point over this month.
But, but then there's the other sort of larger question that, that bugs the, truly bugs me, is that we keep being asked to support things in isolation with no sort of plan for what it's going to be. And so that it's whoever comes to the table first or makes the best plea. And I think, I think the system isn't good.
Now, our agenda's good. That's excellent. Um, then let us, then let us broach that question slowly, carefully, in a baby step of, just as you put it, what's the system for, for that? I think we've heard a little bit of an echo of it tonight in terms of, of college hockey. The, the reason I ask that question, why is this in front of us? Is because we don't actually have a mechanism for bumping things off when they reach a some, some minimum.
So is that athletic component goes away?
Exactly. So, so, so I think the question is, what's the right system? And maybe we could give some, a little bit of time to that in October before things get really hairy with. We'll flush that out a little bit and try to put some, some things in place to think about, uh, in the package. Anything else for the agenda, obviously, so I can talk about that if it's not there? Meeting minutes. We have the Dover Sherrville Regional School meeting minutes of six, eleven, two thousand thirteen, and now we're skipping.
I just had one change. I was chair as well. As much as I'd love to.
You say you were or you?
It says I'm nominated to service chair. I'm nominated to serve vice chair. That's all. That's quite all right. That's all you're. It's just a neat cut and paste.
Any, you get that?
So I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of June eleventh, two thousand thirteen as amended?
Yeah, certainly. Any other discussion, any other changes? Just me?
No, those are, I was just raising my.
Any, anything else for these minutes? I have nothing else. Uh, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Uh, we also have minutes of July seventeen, two thousand thirteen.
Do we need to add Chris to that one? She was there, right?
Was Chris there or not there?
No. No, that was the budget workshop. Was she there? Yeah.
July seventeen, yes. Jim seventeen.
No, July.
July seventeen, they're July seventeen.
I have it.
I, I had the name of the speaker that were.
She was there.
She was there.
I sat next to her at one point.
I will add her.
We talked about the intermunicipal agreement.
We thought you got that resolved.
Okay, thank you. Um, Claire, thank you for doing these. On your first bullet, first sub-bullet, it says topics included, but.
But.
Issues, what's that? Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, so just strike the word, but, um, and I do.
Maybe you're trying to say topics included, but not all of them.
No, don't try.
Believe me.
Try. Just strike the word. It's perfect. Anything else on those minutes of July seventeen, two thousand thirteen? Motion to approve? So, thank you. Second?
Second.
All those included. Um, uh, and we have the.
We don't vote those to a joint meeting. Oh.
You do though.
Oh, right. No, we don't vote the joint meeting minutes till we have a joint meeting.
Oh, at the joint meeting. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. That's true. You're such a good read, too. Uh, and then we note this extraordinarily colorful and very helpful.
I like that.
All the data. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Saving lots of paper.
I almost looked over the leader.
Thank you for the lead. In the spirit of continuous improvement, there is a formula error. Page two. Well, I expected to say somewhere. Page two, third column, uh, total number of in district Sherborne spent. Is one twenty-nine, I think, adding fifty-five, forty-three and thirty-one together.
You're talking about the seventy-fourth.
Yeah, one twenty-nine.
That I didn't refer to the Dover number.
I was just making sure that you were paying attention.
Yeah, in fact, it's the sum of forty-three and thirty-one, not in, in this one, fifty-five.
Yeah.
All right. Um, we're not going to adjourn.
The ratio.
To executive session.
We are, we are not. We adjourned public meeting, not to return to.
We both should go into executive session.
Or you both individually. All to.
First of all, we need to go. So we do executive.
We need it for just a couple minutes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine o'clock. Well done. Two and a half hours.